This is the original bail before the new balance and then the secretary inside the water.
With probation, uh, there's no bail. You're held. No bail. Just got, it wasn't always that way, but uh, you have to have a detention hearing, but it's, there's no bail.
There really is this like push of televising, cause there's the last defense, there's something else on um, is it A and E or Bravo? It's like A and E I think about another kind of like roundfully convicted people. There's like this,
this is, this affair with no, that's coming out now because of the.
There's like a lot of different things. Yeah.
Are this can ready?
Camera. She said one minute.
She was um, the.
Start.
Yep.
Should we just start? Yeah, we'll just start. Okay, perfect.
Okay. I feel out of practice. Let's see if I've got my stuff organized.
We're gonna need to get you another notebook soon.
You know, I was already in the market looking at some and I like it's pink beca- not now I like pink, but that I can see it easily. I can easily grab it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Is that a moleskin?
A poppin'. It's like the junior. It's not very fancy.
Oh, okay, alright. Like Mary?
My mother-in-law got it for me. I'm like, oh, this is.
It's kind of a mosey rat.
Today is July eleventh.
Alright, cable, we're ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is your weekly, uh, board of, I guess bi-weekly in the summer, Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. The date is July eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. It will be broadcast live on Channel Nine, played back on Channel Nine, and we will have a recording placed on our YouTube channel as well. And at this time, I'd ask that everybody stand, uh, for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Chairman, while we're standing here, I would mention the passing of Michael Pacheco, Elsie Evangello, and Jean Pacheco. I remember Elsie because she attended Saint Nicholas Church. Jean Atwood Pacheco, I remember very well. Jean and I played softball together. Jean was a super curveball catcher, and I was a catcher, uh, so I remember that curveball. She also played basketball, uh, and I played that with her, and she was a member of the National Honor Society. We were on at the same time. So in their memory, I would mention, uh, I would request a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and our condolences to their families. Just before we begin public input, as is customary as we open our Board of Selectmen's meetings, I did want to congratulate our newly minted selectman, Mr. Ken Pacheco.
Thank you.
Um, and I wanted to, yeah, absolutely. Congrats. And I wanted to, uh, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to make a comment. As you know, I'm, uh, completing the term of Jack Taylor, and I wanted to thank him, Jack Taylor, for, he was our Veterans Agent, he was our selectman, for all the great work he's done for this town. Also wanted to thank him for his service. He was in the military and he, uh, helped protect, uh, this great country that we live in. I'm happy to work with our town administrator, Mallory Aristine, uh, Karen Bradyette. I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to working with you, Mr. Chairman, and Nancy Gula.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Here, here.
Let's go to work.
Here, here. Alright, uh, we have some public. Um, so would anybody like to speak? Mr. Williams? And if you do, just, uh, don't mind, uh, introducing yourself and your address. Thank you, sir. Yeah, you can stand there. Yep.
I have these for you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll give you this.
Thank you. Do you happen to have one more copy? If not, it's okay, but it's okay.
I, I do know.
It's okay. Nope, don't worry about it. I'll get it later. It's fine.
Sure. You can share it with, uh, I mean Brett and I could look at once.
Yep.
I want to let you look at this.
Yeah, Mr. Williams, you can, you can start.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
Okay, uh, my name is Glenn Williams. I live at two oh nine Chase Street. That's over in North Dayton. I have lived there for about thirty years, thirty years now, and, uh, something, a problem in the neighborhood has happened lately that, that I would like to bring it to your attention and, uh, state up, state our feelings. My, my wife and I, feel, feel the same way, so. I, uh, I'm not very good at public speaking, so if you indulge me, I'll just read a little bit, and then I'll say what I came to say. And then we can go back and forth, if, if that's okay, so. I come befo- can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I came before you tonight to discuss our experience with the town about rats discovered on our property in June two thousand and eight. My wife Valerie and I have lived in North Dayton for thirty years. We raised our three daughters who have gone through the Dayton and Dayton Rehoboth School system. They participated in school activities, softball, other sports, church functions, and other events. We have enjoyed our home in North Dayton very much until recently. We, we were sitting in our backyard and Valerie saw a rat coming across the property. She called New England Pest Control the next day, and he came out. While New England Pest Control was on site, he also saw a rat coming from one ninety-five Chase Street. He explained he saw a burrow. He saw a burrow that, uh, the rat had burrowed his way under the fence, the corner, uh, the corner of our property, and you can see some photos, photos attached, uh, of that corner. So, New England Pest Control set up six bait stations, uh, on our property. He also set up traps in our garage, which is nearby. This experience has brought to our attention a village-wide problem described to us as North Dayton has a rat problem. We have lived in this village for thirty years and, and this was news to us. One big question I have tonight was, what has the town done to address the rat problem? What is the short-term plan, and what is the long-term plan? The report letter from the Board of Health cites only one cause of the rats on our property, or any other property, and that it is due to feeding of birds on our property. Uh, in other words, it's our fault. I'm asking the Board of Health to explain what criteria they used to reach their conclusions listed in their letters of June two thousand and eighteen. What credible information, data, research, history was used in this decision-making? Based on the ex- explanations in the letters, the town of Dayton's findings is based primarily, if not entirely, on observations and conversations and nothing more. This method often leads to very subjective opinions. Now, one ninety-five Chase Street has been cleaned up and, and conditions have improved. We have been invited to walk their property, and we hope to do, do so soon. But, but some concerns remain. We have, uh, information and questions based on what we have done since the problem arise. Some of this information was available to you when you came to our property, some we have learned since. A question, if you had somebody information that follows, would you consider it? Would it change your mind? Why or why not? Uh, we'd, we'd like to know, when was the town first notified of any rat or rodent trouble at one ninety-five Chase Street? We have, we have heard a different answer every time we ask the question. I've heard two weeks last year, about a month. Wha- what is the answer? Now, in that, uh, handout that I gave you, uh, there's three sketches. Uh, they are pretty crude, but I'm just trying to make a point with it. Sketch one, uh, shows the bait stations. That's the one with the green, green, green ink. Sketch one shows the bait stations set up on our property by Northeast Pest Control. Please note that all the stations are placed on the left side of the property. These stations were placed by Northeast Control, not Northeast Pest Control, excuse me. He did not see the need to place any bait stations or traps on the opposite, opposite side of our property. Sketch two shows the location of the dead rats we have found on our property. All were found within five to ten feet from, from the property line. Sketch three shows the back of our house and where our bird feeders are. Please note there are no bait stations or traps placed in this area under or near the bird feeder. This area has been cleaned since the Board of Health was on our property on or about six eleven, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we, we have lived on Chase Street for thirty years. We have fed the birds since we moved in. We have never had rats on our property until recently. What has changed is the ownership of the property next door and the way the property has been kept. What was going on, on the, behind our fence was unknown to us until this spring, when we went to set up a temporary fence for, for our dog i- in the backyard. We also have reason to believe rats, or a rat may be trapped underneath our porch. Again, this is on the left side of the property. Are there other properties in North Dayton who have reported rat problems? So, uh, also attached are the invoices and comments from New England Pest Control. His initial report recommends to reduce harborage. The harborage has been reduced. If you look at the definition of harborage, that is exactly what was going on in one of our, one of our photos. The second report is dated July sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and this, this, uh, this report's, I don't, I don't know if the report says it, but he told me Station Six was completely empty. This means that the rats are still in the area feeding. Station number six is located at the very rear of our property, and it is right up against the fence with the North Dayton Playground and Ball Field. And this ball field was used just about every night of the week, this, this spring. I asked New England Pest Control if he would agree the one and only cause of the rats on our property is our feeding of the birds. And he said it's never, never just one cause. I also asked New England Pest Control if he believes the rats were feeding up or near our house, under our feeders. He said he would expect to see evidence of rat traffic in that area, and he did not. We did not see any rat traffic either. We now know that Dayton is a right-to-farm or agricultural community. This, this can create a situation where the rights of one citizen's right to farm collides or trumps on other citizens' rights to the quiet enjoyment of their own property, and the second citizen has no control over what's happening next door or anywhere. Again, our experience has brought to light a wider problem in North Dayton Village. There is a rat problem we had no prior knowledge too. I don't believe many people in the village are aware of the problem either. We would be interested to know, what your questionnaires show, where are the other sightings in North Dayton? What can you tell me about the old sewer pipes connected to the mills, where the problems are, et cetera, et cetera? Again, what is the short-term plan and long-term plan to deal with this problem? Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Um, I know the Board of Health has been working on this, so, uh, at this time, if my colleagues don't have any issue with this, I'd like to, if it's okay with you, ACO Ferry, did you have anything you wanted to respond to? Town Administrator Aristine?
So, I was, um, this issue was brought to my attention actually through the Williams, so I did work closely with the Board of Health just to monitor the situation and find out what I could, um, about what was going on. So I'd just like to say thanks for putting this in a cogent way for us to go one by one, um, essentially, so, um, as your exterminator said, it is never one cause. That's exactly the problem. Um, it's just trying to find out where a food source is, where a shelter exists, and, you know, where they could be getting water. So the water's pretty obvious where that's coming from. But anyway, the Board of Health responded to the complaint, um, and I know there was a Board of Health meeting tonight, just before this meeting, um, so I can let the Animal Control Officer give an update on that, but as far as what the town's response was, for the sewer pipes, we did scope various pipes in the area, and there was no evidence of any rat crossings or, um, inhabiting. We did, um, collectively, the town, did, um, a drive-by, I guess, to inspect cornfields, areas where we thought that rats would be congregating or hanging out, finding their shelter, finding their food, and this was expanded over most of the North Dayton Village area. They, the Board of Health, um, who I'll commend on this, did send out a questionnaire to a target area of North Dayton. Thank you to those residents who responded, because it is very helpful to them to find a locus of where they might be kind of this big mass, um, centrally located. We have to find out where they are in order to proceed. So if it's private property, we can't just send an exterminator and have them start doing what they do with chemicals on private property. If it's private property and it's, you know, shrunk down to one location, the Board of Health can work with that property owner and figure out how to combat the, uh, the issue. One of your questions was, has the Board of Health received, well, I think it's the Board of Health, um, received other complaints or sightings of rats? The answer is yes, um, and they had been reacting to that, which is where the questionnaire was sort of born. Um, I think that the Board of Health took immediate action, um, right away, trying to inspect where the rats were located, calling on the public to help them out with the sighting so they could narrow down a locus. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate, I believe that they have found that, but I'm not gonna speak to that. Um, as far as the resident complaint, it's my understanding that the Board of Health did go out and address that complaint. They did do inspections on the property multiple times, and the final inspection, and the resident was compliant with that process and cooperative, and, um, I believe a report is being made. It was just Monday that that deadline was. Um, okay, let's see, the right to farm, I'll just touch on, so that was up for our town meeting approval. We did quite an, I, actually, I don't even want to take credit for it. This board did quite an extensive, um, educational drive to talk about right-to-farm and the Agricultural Commission, and that was ultimately voted in favor of. So, right-to-farm would, would be here to stay unless town meeting went to revoke that.
One of my, one of my problems is the one and only cause quoted by the town was our own bird feeding. And I, I think that's a, a very narrow-minded, uh.
So, I, ma- may I? Um, I understand, totally understand why you'd be frustrated. Um, but I will just say, I did read the letter. This is the first time I've saw the letter. They're not like, see, they don't CC us when they send a resident like a private letter. Um, it doesn't say the one and only cause. It just asked you to please refrain from feeding the birds as they think that that might be a source. Is that correct? Okay. They don't know. They're just trying.
That certainly was implied.
No, no, I understand, but they're not saying, they're not blaming, um, you know, the fact that you and, and your spouse enjoy feeding the birds. They're just saying they think it may have something to do as one of the causes, so they were just asking you to refrain so they could better ascertain what may be. And it sounds like there's not gonna be one cause. It sounds like there's probably an amalgamation of different things.
And all of the, in that questionnaire was also an indication to those other, um, homes, please stop feeding stray animals, any sort of food at all, please stop. And then the Animal Control Officer did also make sure that anyone who was a chicken owner was securing their coop correctly, securing the food for the chickens correctly. So there was due diligence done on that, and I, I should have also apologized. I, I would not enjoy having this as part of my household as well, so I do sympathize. Um, it is part of the reason why I took immediate action to not insert myself in the Board of Health, but involve myself with them and, and have a open communication with them to make sure that things were moving along and it wasn't dropped somewhere.
May I add one other thing? I just wanted to also add, um, I know that some people who, some people believe that right-to-farm means I have a right to farm and you can't say anything. Part of the right-to-farm, um, was the formation of an Agricultural Commission, and that's basically, they're involved in a dispute resolution process. So if you had an issue with farming practices, um, if someone's property near you, you would file ba- essentially like a grievance with the Agricultural Commission. They would involve the appropriate board so that you could get a resolution. It's not simply, we're a right-to-farm community, sorry, you're gonna have to get used to it. They try to work things out between neighbors. Um, so that was more the point of it.
Well, that's, that's not the attitude that we, or the, the vibe we got from the town. It said, it was pretty much that way. You, you can have chickens. Even the, the town employees who came said, we have chickens, so that, we felt like we were being, uh, you know, shot down, and, and, uh, you know, we'd got around the town that we, uh, we don't like chickens and, uh, don't, and, uh, we're, we're like radioactive when, when we talk, when, when people talk to us, and, uh, it's just not so. I, we just, uh, we just want a, a fair shake from the town, and to date, we don't feel we've got it. And, uh, wh- why wouldn't I get a questionnaire like that if I'm right in the midst of the, the battle?
We knew, you were, you were seeing that. We had already investigated. We were looking at other people that had said, in your neighborhood, uh, we just went out today. Today was, myself and Tom and I just went out today. We think we have found one of the locations. We have three locations we're looking at. This one, we're looking at as much as we could. It'll be the shed. We feel that this could be the spot where they're coming from. We have set out some bait to them. Bait that is pet-friendly, so if a cat eats a ch- uh, rat, it's not gonna die. We are going to go back and we check those station, that station, and if there is some missing, we know where's, we're sorting in that place where, where, um, where they are. That was also the place that somebody told us they had seen, they had killed dirty rats in that area. So, we think we have got the space we think we have. It may not, but we think we have. Uh, so, we are working to try and figure that out. And once we have that area, then we'll take the next step to try to eradicate as much as we can. We never run our eradicate ever rat, because people are gonna have chickens, people are gonna leave food out. It's booked, it's gonna happen. But to keep the population down is what we're looking to do. Um, and the chicken owners, the chicken owners that I know in the area have all put their foods in galvanized buckets so the rats can't get in it. Um, one person gave it up to the chickens because they just didn't want the problem anymore. Unfortunately, they have chickens. It can be a problem. Um, one ninety-five Chase Street, we were there on Monday. We inspected everything that's good there. He's down to, I wanna say ten chickens, if that, because he just had four food by the paddy. And then they made this, one of his things, and eradicated four of his, he's got all his turkeys. So all he has is that one little pad.
Didn't get rid of the rats, though.
Well, I didn't, we didn't see any evidence of rats on his property at this point. Um, he gets a little muddy, and then we hock him up, but no, um, he's cleaned up behind the shed. There's no evidence back there. Um, there's no evidence of them being there at this point. That doesn't mean that they don't hunt with his yard, or come through his yard, and comes in Williams' yard, and that kind of stuff, because they're looking for food. I think some of the problem is they're looking for food wherever they're stationed, because people have started to realize, oh, I've gotta do this, and that's stopping to take away some of their food, like the, instead of leaving their chicken grain in bags and that kind of stuff. So, um, they're looking for food, I believe, and that's why we're seeing more of them, and I, I would believe we had a throw cat problem up there. We've basically eradicated that throw cat prob- problem, so I think we're also seeing an abundance of rats, because there's nothing to take care of them anymore. It doesn't mean that they were never there, it's just that we didn't see them because someone was taking care of them.
Correct. That actually makes a lot of sense, too.
We are, we have put in hours, hours.
I'd also like to just make a plug for the barn permit. So, a barn permit exists. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Barn permit in effect, because for the state, whether we have one cow, two chickens, or anything, I need to inspect. And the state, it's not so we can monitor what you have. It's more so that if we had an emergency in town, I need to know where all those farms are so we can start evacuating. If I had a bird flu come through that we were worrying about three, four years ago, and I had a chicken farm or a duck farm come down with it, and I had closed down farms ten miles in radius, and I don't know where they are, you couldn't buy a ch- you couldn't buy a stock, or we could end up having more problems because you're taking stuff off the property that you shouldn't be. So it's ten dollars. It's not, if you already have a stable license, because you have horses, that's okay, because I come and does the thing, inspect, and I see cows and their chickens and stuff like that. But if you have chickens, pigs, rabbits, anything like that in the backyard that you thought, oh, you know, I just have a little hobby farm, or just have a few, we need to know. We need, we need to be able to inspect. We need to know where they are just so the state knows.
This shed that could be a suspect area, uh, do you know what's in the shed? Is it just like tools and stuff?
It's just like, it's tools in the shed, and they're not in the shed. It's on a cement slab, but we did, I did see burrowing underneath the cement.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we're thinking that that's where they are. Uh, but the shed is beautiful. We can never tell, but in the fence area, there's some chewing in the fences, chewing in, in some of the sheds. So we're thinking we've probably got the area. We're hoping that's what we can do.
Uh, has there been any recent land disturbance in this area of any kind?
Besides, next to the, on the other side, Mr. Williams, they took down a shed, a garage. That happened right before they saw the rats. So, I mean, besides that, there's been no real big construction back there.
Okay.
Anything else you wanted to add? I know you were working, the Board of Health was keeping you abreast of what was going on to do. Did anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you for the open line of communication, and I'll continue to monitor it. I do empathize with your situation, and I hope you know that I do have this open door policy, and you're welcome to use it. But there, it is unfortunately a work in progress, but it looks like we've come pretty far away in one month's time. No, it probably doesn't sound, seem like it, if you're living with it.
Well, I have another question or two, or a comment or two. I would like to know the type of questions that are asked on these questionnaires that I handed out. I'd be interested to know.
I didn't see it, I apologize.
It was where, like asking for locations of where you've seen sightings, how many? You know, if it was a lot or a little, and.
No, it was a collection.
So that you could add any other information that the town might need to know, or could know, or just.
Okay. Now, this problem surfaced on June ninth, it's now July eleventh. You know, when this first came about, we thought there was no urgency shown by the town, or, and we didn't understand it. We called surrounding cities and surrounding towns, and we were told, no, no way it should take this long. We go forty-eight hours, whatever they told us, but this is a month. And you got a public health issue, you got a ball field, the kids are there all the time. Our grandchildren are on our property. The last thing I'll say is, in that package I gave you, we sent out a notice to our neighbors telling them what our experience has been to date. We've given these to the neighbors that we have talked to over the years, and we wanted to let them know, 'cause again, I believe they don't. And other than that, thanks for having me.
I appreciate it. What I would add, and again, our Town Administrator, Aaronstein, has been much more kept abreast of the specific ins and outs of this issue. But what I know of the issue is, it sounds like part of the reason why they couldn't get it resolved is 'cause they don't know where the rats are coming from, which is why it sounds like this morning, or at some point today, you seem to have potentially found the origins.
Well, we had sent out the questionnaires, we're getting them back, little by little, and there was three specific areas. And it was one of the areas that we thought could be a hotspot anyways. So, that's why we went after it. I don't feel it's taken us that long, because at first we thought it was this little situation. And in finding out it's a bigger situation than what we thought. And to try to figure out where they were, it's not gonna happen overnight. We need to talk to people, investigate, get on people's property, that was part of our problem. We couldn't get on people's property. The one person that we thought would let us on our property, we were talking to her. She refused to let us go on her back of our property. So we sort of, well, not that we stopped, we stopped talking to other people. We did get permission from someone to go on their property, so we could look over the fence and we can clean the fences and that kind of stuff. But that kind of stuff takes time, we know. You know, if it was just that small situation, it would've been all taken care of, but we have a bigger situation.
I would just make a general comment that, as we, now you're busy actually addressing the problem, which I understand is time-consuming, but if everybody could just, the relevant boards who are involved could keep the actual residents, and I'm not saying that wasn't done, I'm just saying, when you're not kept abreast of what's going on, you tend to think nothing's being done. So if we just have the Board of Health reminding the residents, hey, this is where we're at, you know, that'd be good.
We did talk about that, we didn't talk about it tonight. Anybody that we see, you can talk to, we'll let them know. And if the Board of Health thought that the playground was a problem, we would shut it down.
Of course.
That we heard about the problem. We don't feel it's a problem, there's no trash left there, I don't believe they're staying there. I believe it's just, it could be a path, they could be going around.
Like a path to the food source, yeah. I understand.
So, my question is, then, has anybody been in communication with Mr. Williams, then, or that family?
I mean, not from, right, we've been emailing, I know he's received them, we had a couple of phone calls. So, I mean, I believe that I have been in.
We have been in contact, but one of, my wife and I feel that there wasn't a steady stream of information, and at times, it was crickets, is what it was. And this only fueled the fire.
I understand. So I wanted you to know, you, I did get your call, I got it before I came here for this meeting. I will give you my cellphone, that's my house phone, so I didn't get the message, so I do apologize. I'll make sure you have that if you have any questions going forward, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Don't give us his cellphone, you're already fortunate.
Don't give it to them.
Mr. Williams, I just wanna comment, I was away for the past couple of weeks, and I found out about the problem when I came back. I will say this to you, I lived on Main Street for thirty-five years. My son had rabbits. Out back, the gentleman raised chickens. One spring morning, he went out to feed the rabbits and found a big rat in the cage. Now, these rabbits are up off the ground with a wire floor, as you can imagine. Well, we know where the rats were coming from. I don't know how many twelve-count packages of, I'll call it rat bait, that I bought from Agway over in Berkeley. This stuff did the job. We treated underneath the rabbit cage, and you had to protect the stuff so it wouldn't get wet, but it had to be accessible. It took us, from that first sighting until the fall, to get rid of the problem. And I mean, they were rats. As a matter of fact, when he, he was just little, and he came in, and he says, ma, there's a big rat in the cage. I says, where's the rabbit? He says, it's huddled in the corner, the rabbit was afraid of the rat. These kind, and mine was, to the best of our knowledge, it was confined to under his rabbit cage. It took all summer long, and don't ask me how many of those suicide chucks I bought. It did get rid of the problem, but it was extremely frustrating. As a matter of fact, that was when we told him, we'll do, we'll feed and water the rabbits, 'cause we didn't want him near it, until we got rid of those things. It is a long process, even when you know where they are. And it finally ended when the person stopped raising chickens. It was a long time.
If I could just add to this, in defense of chicken owners, because I'm a chicken owner, I've had chickens for twenty-eight months. I had one rat the whole time, it was at the beginning, the cage wasn't fully secured. I have hard wire going down a foot into the ground, I haven't seen any signs of rats since then. Foods had galvanized containers. I believe you've been to the house, I've got my barn permit, by the way. So, just because you have chickens doesn't necessarily mean it's drawing rats.
It's the securing the food.
I'm very conscious of it, I had a rooster, as you know. Had to get rid of the rooster, it was part of somebody's soup, I'm sure. But I had to get rid of the rooster because I didn't want my neighbors to be concerned about hearing a rooster. It doesn't bother me, but I didn't want my neighbors to be concerned about it.
And he's exactly right, the problem, this was a, I don't wanna say a large commercial grow-up, but it was more chickens than it was personal use. And absolutely, the problem was the grain, the feed was not secured properly. And it just so happened that, obviously, when you feed rabbits and you have a wire floor, rabbit food falls in there too, so they found another place to come. So, but it took a long time, but we got rid of them.
All right, one last thing. I'm like Lieutenant Columbo here. We have hired somebody for the long term. So we don't expect this to end, we don't want it to come back.
Right.
So, we've hired somebody.
Absolutely.
But feel free to pick up the phone and call. Check with any of us on the board, check with Mallory, leave a message with Mrs. Brady, whatever, we'll get the message, all right? Contact the Board of Health, you know, a progress update, what's happening? Did you, did the suspected area pan out to be the likely place, things like that? And in the meantime, you gotta be diligent with your own property, 'cause you don't want them to relocate.
Yeah, we've cleaned up our property, we're trying to, if we could get past the poison ivy, we've got it twice so far, but we are cleaning it up, the cleaner the better.
And feel free to come back here if you have any more concerns.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other public input? Okay. And again, thank you, Mr. Williams. So, at this time, we'll move on to reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, the appointment of a permanent clerk.
So here we are with a full board, and the previous appointment was made as temporary, and that has been held by Selectman Goulart. So we are here just for a permanent clerk for at least the year duration, before you do your leadership vote next year.
Okay. Are you willing to serve as clerk?
I was gonna make a motion that Nancy Goulart be the permanent.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Kenneth Pacheco as clerk to the Board of Selectmen for the remainder of the FY nineteen.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Discussion? Hearing none? Let's take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, abstentions, the motion passes. And at this time, I'm gonna give the floor to Town Administrator Mallory Aaronstein for our Town Administrator's report.
Okay. So, hello, public, sure you've missed us. So my first item under my report is an update on Old Somerset Avenue and Tremont Street intersection. As everyone's aware, we did make some adjustments to the intersection to better improve sightlines for the stop signs, as there has been quite a few dangerous infractions at that location. So, we reached out to Serpide, and Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry's here. So, Tom, if you'd like to weigh in, just let me know, or just, you know, speak up. But we reached out to Serpide, who conducted an analysis of the intersection to provide us some recommendations on what we could do to address the issues. I have kind of just summarized, you have in your packets, a list of, really, it's eight recommendations, but I have one as six A, so seven recommendations, they're in bold. That is what Serpide has recommended in their study. And Superintendent Ferry and I sat down, we discussed it, and came up with some status reports on some of these recommendations, 'cause they've already been in progress. And also, it should be right in the beginning, Nancy, but if you don't have it, it's not very fancy, it just looks like this. Is that not in?
Is it one page?
One page.
It may be attached to other stuff, I always attach to other stuff.
It says Serpide's study at the top. You can continue.
So, the first one's fairly simple, maintain vegetation. We do have a neighbor who helped us out and trimmed his vegetation on the side, thank you very much for that. This has been addressed by Tom, there was a tree hanging down, and that was impeding some sightlines. So, thank you, Tom, and your crew. Another suggestion was to paint a stop line at the stop sign when you were coming from Tremont Street, so that it was a visual reminder of a, you know, intersection coming up. That has been done. The third recommendation is to raise markers at the guardrail, that's that polka dotted sign. Do you wanna weigh in on that? Because I think my note here might be outdated. You were in the process of raising those, has that happened yet? Oh, it's still the same, okay. Okay, so, Tom will expand on that. Number four, increase the size of the speed limit sign. We'd like to take this under advisement and explore an accurate speed assessment, and potentially do that with other roads as well. Reducing the curb radius, this is more of a construction reconfiguration of that area that would kind of level off, it curves out at the moment. This would mean making it a more ninety-degree angle. So, cutting what would, what is now kind of a third lane. So, we also would like to take that under recommendation, under advisement, and explore funding through reconfiguring either Old Somerset Avenue through the tip list with Mass DOT, or the intersection. So we'd like to do a little bit more with that. Repainting the double yellow lines and edge line painting, this is a two-part recommendation. So the double yellow lines, we're in progress of paint striping around town. And the edge line painting is the white lines on the side, so it would, the recommendation is to better define the lane. I don't believe that we should do this until we explore fully what we're gonna do with the curb radius. So to me, those two are intertwined. And then, number seven is to install the flashing stop signs or stop lines with a red light beacon. That flash, get the driver's attention. At this point, we don't really have a recommendation for you on that suggestion. We don't wanna discount it, however, we believe these other items could potentially take care of the need for flashing signs. My one concern is that it's gonna be flashing into somebody's bedroom all night long, and all day long, but noticeable at night. So we'd like to take this recommendation under advisement and see how other improvements may impact the intersection. So, we have this here for you to review. You've all received a copy of Serpide's report, thank you, Serpide, which comes with some pictures and good stuff like that.
I like how you summarized it. So I didn't have to read the report, I'm just saying I read the report. That was good.
Number five, Mr. Ferry, reduce the curb radius. Would that make that a true T-intersection?
Yes, and that would also complicate turning left with the larger vehicles, a combination vehicle, 'cause it's not a true ninety-degree, it's a weird angle there. I'm not sure Serpide's approach to this was what we intended for. I mean, they looked at the whole intersection and took all their concerns and shared it with us. I'm looking at it as we re-looking at the intersection for safety improvements, more in particular, why people are not stopping. We do know most of this accidents are intoxicated, or they just didn't know the stop sign was there.
And speeding.
Right, but if they knew the stop sign were there, they would've been slowing down.
We hope.
So, my approach to this, and I'd like this board to weigh in on it, my approach to this is with what I just said. So, we wanna make sure people know the stop sign's there. We took care of the visibility for the stop signs, we added the double stop sign, double stop ahead. The resident on the right with the avarities, he's well aware of it now, and he's gonna keep an aggressive trim on that side, so we shouldn't have that problem in their future. The other sign, that branch that they alluded to in the report, has been already trimmed. There's still some vegetation to the left, but it does not adhere, or distract, or obscure visibility. When you're at the stop line looking left, it's not a problem right now, but we can still have it trimmed back more. As far as raising the delineation signs on the other side, that can be done. I spoke with Mallory with that, I think we can just add the extension on the poles. It's a little complicated with utilities underground there, but I think just adding the extension to the poles and having those new signs or additional signs above them will help, and it shouldn't interfere with the residential use on that side of the road either. As far as the blinking signs, that's, they're right around thirteen hundred each. And we know it's gonna be a problem, you'll probably have to, you should have a public hearing for that.
Yeah.
Not that you have to, but I think because, knowing that neighborhood, I think you would need to.
Yeah.
We haven't spoken to neighbors, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
We haven't spoken to neighbors in the area that have had the flash.
Back to what Mrs. Goulart was started with, I don't, I know that radius is not interfering with stopping. So I don't think that's something to be addressed. Looking for reconstruction with the tip money from, 'cause the tip money is looking for arteries to connect highways, like one thirty-eight to forty-four, so I know Tremont Street is one of them arteries. And they've softened it up to local control, where you're not gonna be forced to put sidewalks in certain locations, stuff like that. So we can take another look at that. We did before, and we put it on a back burner about three years ago. 'Cause it was gonna be very aggressive in the neighborhood on the changes for the complete streets and whatnot. But that's, they softened it up, and it's more in local control now, which this board would still have to weigh in on. So the stop line's there, the town's in the process of getting the double sided lines painted. Visibility's increased for the signs, all four signs, and the vegetation's not a problem looking ahead. And what's left on my part at this point, I believe is just raising the delineation signs. And whatever else you guys tell me to do.
Is that the black diamonds with the reflective things? Is that what they are, is that what you call?
Yeah, the diamonds with the polka dots, yes.
Okay.
They referred to it in their report as a marker sign, that's not a marker sign. Marker signs are the slashes, there's a left and a right, yes.
My only comment is, and I know we're taking this under advisement, or this particular suggestion under advisement, the flashing stop signs? When I see them in Somerset or Swansea, I've noticed they're never really in a residential area. They're kind of, they're in areas where they're on a lot of houses, so I think that it might be for kind of the reason that you've mentioned.
And, and along with that, if I may, and I know the meeting's becoming long here. And that, and also the white line on the side, it's very important that you don't just throw it up one place. You would need to consider the whole town with that white line, which would almost triple our painting expense. Not that money's an issue when it comes to safety, but that's gonna change the look of the town drastically. And the flashing sign, you really shouldn't just put it in one spot. It should be uniform.
Exactly.
So, that's another thing to, to think about before you weigh in on that.
Thank you.
Were you thinking of the Box Street intersection? Because they recently did that. Are you familiar with the Box Street intersection?
Yes.
Because that was a nightmare. They had the, the yellow blinking lights, the red blinking light.
Yeah.
They gave up, so now it's a four-way stop.
You're flashing.
And it's, but they, but it's not the bright red flashing light. It's the, I wanna call it a neon sign, for lack of a better term.
Yes.
But it's, they made it into a four-way stop.
But these homes around there, too, so they...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure what Brett was talking about, because I knew that they were all homes there, and there were four of them.
Yeah, they're migrating throughout the rest of their city also.
Is that right? Okay.
Now, when their report, they indicated that the speeding, the sign for speeding wasn't appropriate size. Could we, uh, at the moment, put it, replace that sign, put a bigger sign with its current speed limit, and then address it?
Don't recommend that you do this at that time, um, and I, I think that requires further exploration.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
None on this. Thank you for your help on this, Mr. Ferry.
That's all, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a, a motion that we take, um, the Town Administrator's recommendations, uh, under advisement, uh, not only the ones specifically marked under advisement, but all of the information that's been provided, and that we get an update maybe in the fall, sometime September, October, to see, first of all, if we've had accidents, or if what we've got out there is seeming to work.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a perfect idea.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Madam Administrator, update on Council Oak land.
Um, I have this here, but Selectman Goulart, please feel free to weigh in. Selectman Goulart and I have been working on Council Oak, and we are aware that some people have been asking about the status of that since the town acquired the land, and what we're gonna do with it. We reached out to Bristol Aggie, who has this, they are not going to be, if we do do the RFP process, they don't really, are not interested in it at this time. So, we asked them for their advice on how to make sure we could maintain the integrity of the soil, and that it was nutrient-rich, and they advised for a year of rest. So, that actually works out well for us, so we can get our ducks in a row, and put together, work with the Conservation Commission, and put together an appropriate RFP, or whatever we decide to do, leasing the property to a farmer, or what, what may be the case there.
Nobody rests better than the town of Dayton, so we'll take them up on that.
And the Conservation Commission, uh, they're, since they purchased the land, they're aware of this, and they're in agreement. Mr. Ferry and I met with, uh, Mr. Fournette, and explained to him about the Aggie School meeting, where they advised us what to do. So, I have a question for you. So, what's gonna happen down there this year? Is it gonna be mowed, or...
Along, along with meeting with the Aggie School, they recommended we do not mow it during summer, because that would encourage wheat growth. Winter rye, the crop that was planted last fall will help keep that, and we'll readdress it this fall with the Aggie School. The outside will seed, and help make sure we have the right...
Mix?
Mix planting, and then, in the interim between now and then, we should get, take in soil samples, too, to help determine that mix also. That's the only thing, and we do have any soil sample.
So, in the fall, it might be planted again, for the upcoming spring?
Correct, in May, correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else on this, Madam Administrator?
Planted, I'm sorry, planted in May, or planted in the fall?
In May, we planted this fall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have, we have a prop one now, we have a prop one now, so when we know it, that existence may be enough for any one to add to it.
Okay, great.
And that new plant that the school has, it'll till, so it'll be a chance that they could use it on that.
For them to use it, right.
Thank you. Anything else, Madam Administrator?
None on that.
All right. Recommendations on municipal operations. I would just suggest, before we delve into this, and it is your report, so you run the show on this, if we could just, like, all of this, I suspect we would have to flesh out at a future meeting, but if there's anything you think we can do here tonight?
So, for the public's sake, this is a four-page memo that I drafted and am submitting to the board. I know you're not gonna like everything. Hopefully, you'll consider some things, and really, they're just up for discussion, so that we can kind of progress. The one thing that I am asking for you to vote on, which to me is a huge issue, Karen right now is selling in the Selectman's Office Board of Health items. The bulky items, stickers, recycling, transfer station permits, trash bags, accepting sharps. This is a Board of Health function. She's very busy, and I was just hoping I could get a vote tonight, that as I recommend, that this be given over to the Board of Health, which now this would be going on in their department, their building, and free up some space in Karen, because that's not her position. And I have, so, everyone's aware, I did speak with the Board of Health about this. They asked just to wait a little bit, I, to a certain point, and I did, and so they are aware and expecting this, so it's not a blind side in any way.
I think it makes sense. Just so the public is aware, this is all ways to kind of optimize our administrative assistant, Karen Brady's, time, and also to alleviate some of the workload that she's been bearing. She's not, you know, the Secretary of Town Hall, she's the administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, so I think it's, my personal opinion is it's very fitting to have the sale of these items be with the Board of Health, as when a trash question comes in, or questioning about recycling stickers, that should go to the Board of Health anyway, as they are the ones who deal with that, so I'm okay with that.
I think it also completes the transition of a separate Board of Health.
Amen. Perfect. I missed that. That's a very good point. Life comes full circle. So, at this time, I'm entertaining motions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the, uh, excuse me. Let me just say...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That the selling of, uh, I'll call them Board of Health-related supplies, such as trash bags, sharps, stickers, so forth, be transferred from the Board of Selectmen's office to the Board of Health office at the Old Town Hall.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none? Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. From this list, Madam Administrator, was there anything else? I see maybe we could come to some decision on department head meetings. I mean, that's, that's like a no-brainer.
Sure, so this is up, of course, to you. These are just my recommendations. I'm, I mean, I've been mulling these over for quite some time, so I'm ready to, to act, but honest, I, this is a, it's a lengthy document, so I'm just gonna defer to you on that.
Okay, so for...
I agree, you know, if that's something you're comfortable with.
We've got a meeting tomorrow. We're gonna talk about this tomorrow, maybe with the department heads, and see if anyone's, let's get some feedback from the department heads, okay?
Was there anything else from here, that you wanted to discuss tonight?
Um, another one that I feel is a little one, but again, I, I don't wanna pressure you into doing anything too quickly. So, the procurement item that I have here is just that the board lift that policy. For, right now, the policy is that any item or service that is over a thousand dollars needs special approval by the Board of Selectmen, and requires more paperwork, a little bit more running around. My main concern, I have a few concerns, but my main concern is that this indirectly impacts negatively three departments, by virtue of what that department does, has to purchase items that are costly. That's your fire department, your highway department, your police department. Just by name, you know, a taser is two thousand dollars, a radio is two thousand dollars. So, just their general equipment, they have to run around doing a little extra legwork. So, I am recommending that we lift that. It is not to say that checks and balances won't be in place, they will still operate, you know, making sure that taxpayer dollars are being spent wisely, and it's been my experience here that just about every department head and employee is very mindful about the taxpayer money that is contributing to what we do here in the town of Dayton.
So, are you recommending that we just do a lift? Is there gonna be a new figure?
A new limit?
I do not recommend a new limit. I would just like to go with what the state has in their laws, which is a five thousand dollar limit.
Okay.
But, again, that's just...
I was just gonna say, a short form contract, I believe, is a five thousand dollar limit, and anything over that, services goes to the long form.
So, I'm not, I like that, actually, having two different, so I, that's, I'm, I'm not really touching upon that. This is really that one thousand dollar limit. To me, it's too low in this day and age, and indirectly hurting three departments just because of what those departments do.
Okay.
So, that's, that's really the motivation for this.
Delaying some things.
I do like the short, short contract, the short form contract, long-term contract.
I'm thinking that, and I'm willing to make the motion, but just for, since we're discussing this, I'm thinking a five thousand dollar limit would be good, simply because we, that con, that, that procedure in place for contracts already tells everyone, um, up to five thousand dollars, you use the short form, and there are certain terms and conditions listed. So, they know that that's a threshold. That's the first, and then, we know when it gets beyond that, you gotta go with the long form, with the more terms and the more approval process. So, um, I, I think that if we were to say, uh, a thousand, excuse me, five thousand, it would be in keeping what they're already familiar with, if they wanna go out and hire somebody to do a service that has to be put out there, so...
I think that's wholly appropriate. Five thousand is also the first threshold under a thirty B supply and service, and it requires sound business. So, that's in line with the state.
So, by rescind, which, whatever the verbiage is, lifting this, then it's defaulting to what the state is already dicting.
And it is wise for us to have our own policy on procurement. That's, um, I've been here before with that, so that's a work in progress, but I, I just, one thousand is too low in this day and age. It, it just is.
Well, we don't wanna tie the hands of our police, fire, and highway, who might need to move quickly on things, and not, you know, have time to run through the rigmarole.
I think when this was, I wasn't on the board, but I think this was put in place when there had been some, what else is new, problems related to, uh, certain items that were procured, and were, I'll just say, were of substantial dollar value. And so, the one thousand dollar limit was put in, but I think, um, I think it's safe to say, I think we've moved beyond that now. So, Mr. Chairman, um, I make a motion that the procurement level of one thousand dollars be lifted, and that the new amount of five thousand dollars be instituted in that procurement policy.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. That's okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Sure, Mr. Rosa. Sure. Do you mind just, address? No, you don't have to stand, address.
Oh, Dave Rosa, three twenty-three, like, after.
Thank you.
So, I'm just curious, how long after a department makes a procurement, whether it's a thousand dollars or four thousand dollars, how long after they make that does it become physical to the Selectmen?
Madam Administrator?
Oh, no, so if they go, before payment is issued, and before everything, if they do it, you know, in following the steps, before the service is acquired, they get prior authorization, right now, at a thousand dollars. So, that's why I call it kind of this, this block, because...
So, probably within a thirty-eight period. It, it, because they, I think your answer is that, they, they wanna make the procurement, they follow one of the procedures, I'm gonna, just for a moment, for discussion purposes, it's probably in a two or three week period, that it becomes visible to either our office or the Board of Health.
Not even. It's not that long. So, so the police chief needs to buy tasers, and they're a thousand dollars, or thousand and one dollars apiece. So, he has to show three quotes that, or declare that it's a proprietary item, and then the chief procurement officer signs off, the Board of Selectmen chairman signs off, and the town accountant signs off, and that is before they're able to acquire the item and less pay. Yes, but it still requires three individuals whose office is outside of this building to come to this building, before they can get something necessary for their department. So, yeah. Oh, no, I know, I just, they're...
I'm just curious about, you know, what is the time for, uh, the latch? Okay, thank you.
Right. But sometimes, like, in three, a three-month period, I saw the same department head four times on the one thing, and that's what got me, like, what's going on here? I mean, why are, not that I don't like seeing them, but why are you always here?
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Further discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you.
Oh, no problem. Well, we didn't vote yet, so, no, you did it.
I just another comment. I think the other thing, too, is if there should be an emergency arise, and I will use Mr. Ferry, since he's sitting here, where he needs something in a hurry, um, the higher dollar limit, I think, is a better guideline for him. Obviously, if it's an emergency, it's gonna get approved, and, um, and again, I will go back to previous history, he has a history of running a tight ship. I will leave it at that. Manages his budget well, and this gives him a little bit more flexibility.
Absolutely. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. I would just ask my colleagues, I know this is a lengthy document, which is why I didn't wanna flesh it all out tonight, but this will be back on the agenda under Old Business next meeting, as I understand, so, um, one way or the other, no matter what we decide, we will get through, hopefully, more of this document next meeting.
And the ones we covered tonight, we should probably mention tomorrow at the department head meeting, so they all know we've done some of these.
Actually, I have a to-do list. I'm gonna draft memos on both of these, and, um, put something out to the public, so they know where to get, um, their trash bags.
Mr. Ferry will come in with a handful of five thousand dollar...
All right.
I would just, uh, I would just suggest, as we go over these items, that passports be one of the next items that we discuss.
Absolutely.
Tonight, or next week?
The next, uh, next meeting, but passports, because I kinda saw what was going on tonight, as some of us saw.
Yeah. I agree.
So, I feel that that needs to be addressed.
Yep.
And, um, I just want to say, if you have any questions about this, like, please feel free to, um, prior to the meeting, one-on-one with me.
And I appreciate you taking the time to make the document. Very, very needed. Okay, under Old Business, we have the Host Community Agreement and Updated Letter of Non-Opposition, but I believe we're gonna hold till next meeting?
Yes. Something has come up, not, not on our end, but they have asked for some more time before, so they can handle something, and that should be, um, next meeting, we should be having that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table action on the Host Community Agreement for one connection till the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Under Appointments, Insurance Advisory Committee.
We, we figured out who everybody represents there on this one, so...
Oh, this was the one we delayed, because we weren't sure.
So, thank you, Karen.
Did we determine who the retirees?
Yes.
Is it Mr., uh, Mr. Pearce, or is it Mr. Sanson?
It was Sanson.
I think it was Sanson, yeah.
Yep, I remember that. Mr. Sanson.
Okay.
Okay, accepting motions. Okay, accepting motions.
So, so can I make a motion for all these people of one?
Yes.
Just read their titles. Some of them are alternate member. We wanna be precise here.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that Paul Reed. What was it gonna say? That's an alternate or?
A L T.
Good point. I would, I'll make a motion that Paul Reed, uh, be appointed, Susanna Maderas be appointed as an alternate, uh, that Mary Hathaway be appointed, uh, to the insurance advisory committee, that Christopher McGee, uh, be appointed to the insurance advisory committee. Uh, Thomas Mader, Maderas be appointed. That Dennis Hazel be appointed, that Phyllis Haskell be appointed, uh, Gary Sanson, do I have to mention a retiree?
Yeah.
Be appointed, and Tina Braga, uh, be appointed to the insurance advisory board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes. Rescind IT appointment of Jennifer Louise, excuse me, rescind appointment of Jennifer Louise from the IT committee. Accepting motions.
Did, we appointed her?
She declined it. It's, there's, she declined.
Oh, all right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that we rescind the appointment of Jennifer Louise to the IT committee.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The motion passes. Appointments to the agricultural commission. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask my colleagues, before we make these votes, there were five members and two non-voting members. I forget the exact title, associate, whatever it was. How are we gonna pick who's gonna be the non-voting members? We've received six applications or letters of interest. Um, ACO Stacy Ferry will be a voting member, as I understand. So we have four voting members to appoint besides Mrs. Ferry and then two non-voting members. Personally, one of the applicants is Leslie Blanchett. Um, she's going to, um, she's from the-
Aggie School.
Aggie School Farm Science Program. I think she should be a voting member. I think the Aggie School would wanna be represented. So that's kind of my plug. Um, what is everyone thinking?
Can I see the, uh?
Sure. And all of these people are Dayton residents involved in farming.
I'm gonna recommend Kenneth Arujo.
And I know Mrs. Peanut and Mrs. Turgeon really wanna be on it, Mrs. Katavia as well.
Mrs. Katavia, they still farm.
This is very exciting because when we did the appointments, uh, a couple meetings ago, there were a lot of repeat names. And this sounds like all new people. So that's really great. I just wanna say.
Who had applied, by the way, months ago, like, before this was ever even accepted at the town meeting, we were getting applications.
So, and they all meet their criteria, right? Cause they have to either have an interest in farming or be a farmer themselves, so.
Well, I would add Mrs. Katavia to the list because she, she doesn't have an active farm.
And I would add John Buffington.
Mm-hmm.
So does that give us five?
And then we give it to.
And what was it about, uh, Ms. Blanchett? What was the?
Oh, she's, uh, she's a resident of Dayton and she works at the Aggie School. So she would be a good representative from the Aggie School too.
So we can have the five we've discussed, Mr. Arujo, Mrs. Katavia, Mrs. Blanchett, Mr. Buffington, Mrs. Ferry as the five members, and then have Mrs. Peanut and Mrs. Turgeon as the non-voting members. And maybe we can switch it up after a year, would, you know, we can discuss that at a later date.
Well, not only that, if, if down the road someone can't serve, we've got somebody to step in. Right.
So I'll make a motion that Kenneth Arujo, Barbara Katavia, Leslie Blanchett, John Buffington and Stacy Ferry be, uh, members of, voting members of the agricultural commission and that Kelly Peanut and Samantha Turgeon, uh, be alternates.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Woo, we have an agcom. That's great.
It is great. And all new names. Well, not new to Dayton, but new to volunteering.
Volunteering for the town. Yep. A lot of people who care about their community. A lot of new blood. That's great. All right, and last but not least is the mooring officer.
We just happened to skip over him last time. Whoops.
I'm sorry, Mr. Duffy.
Sorry.
Do they serve staggered terms?
Uh, he is a, which is this, agricultural commission? So, hmm, what is that by?
No, wait a minute. No, he is the moorings officer. He's an assistant harbor master. We have two assistants. That's right. Okay.
Yes, but he's the mooring.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, Mark Duffy be the mooring officer and that his term expire on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes. Regional?
I'm sorry. I just have a very brief announcement about the harbor master. Um, so kudos to Ron Marino. He had come to us asking about wearing a camera or having a camera on the boat. And so that is going to, um, that can only just help the situation. So that is going to go into effect and of course, in compliance with state law. He will have to notify, you know, in some visual sign on the boat that you're under surveillance. So that's just a FYI, that's happening.
That's a good idea.
That's a very good idea. So thank you, Ron. I appreciate that, you know, uh, proactiveness.
Regional agreement discussion. Um, I have no problem meeting with the board of selectmen. I guess we're just gonna discuss how we wanna proceed. No problem meeting with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen. Here's the issue I have. I have met with the school committee. I have been with selectman Taylor. You were invited as well, selectman Gull. I think you had another meeting that night to hear the school committee's draft regional agreement, to discuss it with them. At the same time that the school committee was having their meeting with us and the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen was invited but did not, um, choose to attend, they were having their own meeting with their finance committee on their regional draft agreement that they've gone ahead and decided to make themselves. So my issue with this is now we have two regional agreements, one from the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen and one from the school committee. And we're getting a request from the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen to meet just with them to discuss their regional agreement. Now, the problem I have with that is I think we would all acknowledge on this day, dais, that the school committee are the elected officials who are supposed to be dealing with the schools. So why would we go and have a meeting with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen and completely circumvent the officials who were elected to deal with the schools? So my position is, I'll happily meet with the board of selectmen, but the school committee needs to have their seat at the table, along with if they choose to invite their finance committee, I'm okay with that, and the Dayton Finance Committee. Because there's not gonna be any solution devised without the other people playing a role and having a seat at the table and a voice in the discussion. So that's my opinion. I'll meet with them, but everybody needs to have a seat at the table.
Do we know if the Rehoboth Selectmen with their draft have given a copy to the, uh, school at all?
I doubt it.
But the, so we have two requests of what our input is from the school committee or Dr. Azar.
Yep.
So.
So what is he saying?
He says, can you please provide feedback on the regional agreement? But of course, that's regional agreement A, I guess, draft A. And then the, so we just need to do two responses.
Do we have draft A? I haven't seen the one from the school.
I have not seen draft A either.
They gave me one when I went there.
Oh, I, uh, selectman Vannay stopped in here, well, it was the night that, uh, Jack submitted his resignation. Selectman Vannay came by here and left three copies. I don't know, uh, have you seen a copy of? All right, so, so. All right, so we need to make some copies.
Right.
She sent you that.
You sent me by email, yes. I've seen that. I've read that.
Okay, so, so, all right, so that's one. Whether we, if we're gonna meet, so that's one we've got to review, but I haven't seen the one that the superintendent's referring to. So we need that also.
So we should, if you can, if you can send them an email, ask them to send everybody a copy of the school committee's regional agreement.
February.
Yep, and then we can, whatever the board decides, but my proposal is to send the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen an email or a letter, however we wanna do it, um, and just let them know, we're gonna have a meeting, but since there are two proposals and both are asking for feedback, it's time to have a meeting together where we, where we flesh this all out.
With the school committee.
Correct, yeah.
Now, there is a regional agreement committee, right?
Yeah, that's separate. That's another committee.
But that's one, that's that one person. So it's not a whole committee.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Deggan, that's not his committee that he's on?
I'm thinking of the committee. There was a, the RAC committee. All right.
The RAC committee.
That was, cause Ed Swat served on that. And they, they took, they took years and couldn't reach an agreement on the allocation of costs. And they submitted a report to the school committee. Then I think the school committee had a committee that did something. So it's Dr., Dr. Azar must be talking about the next report that came from the school committee or combined something.
Correct, with that.
It's not the RAC report.
It's a subcommittee. That's what, no, it's not the RAC report. It's the subcommittee of the school committee.
So the one we're looking for is.
This is even more reason to just get it.
The latest one that he's referring to, because we haven't seen that.
Yep.
I don't remember getting the RAC report either.
I saw that. No, they only gave it to me when, cause you showed up at the meeting and then they, they were, there was no, like, email beforehand and I came and I, you know, I had read it all. It wasn't like that. So, yeah, that's why.
So if you could request that as, as, uh, from Dr. Azar, but also if you could, uh, get in touch with, um, Helen Denon or for Skip, because he's the one, he's called my house a couple of times and I told him that we hadn't met to discuss it. We hadn't set up the date and I was gonna be gone for a bit anyhow. And, um, and we had the special election coming up and, you know. Um, but let him know that we want both agreements. They were in the process of trying to get the other one, so that.
So are we waiting for our due diligence and research on the school committee version before we put together that meeting with the selectmen?
I think we should, cause-
Yeah, well, I'd like everybody to be able to read it first.
We've got to, uh, this is not gonna be a couple of pages.
No.
No, no.
And I know the one that, um, Skip Vannay brought in is multiple pages and it's the kind of thing you, so they're not gonna be
Sure.
short. And we're gonna, you know, I picture sitting there and reading this and reading this and
That's how it is, yeah.
Then going to the next page.
I've read the, the skip, the one that Skip dropped off and it's nice enough to show what was deleted.
The school committee's one did that too. I think we should let them know now, we would like to have a meeting. Um, please, and then they'll send us a draft. We'll have some time to read it. I think this is fine because there's the override situation right now. So it's not like we're gonna be making a decision in the midst of, you know, budgetary questions. Um, but that will give us some time to prepare.
The other thing too is we'll have a similarity of what, I'm hoping there's gonna be similarity, quite frankly, that what the selectmen have put together and what the school committee has put together, we can put something together that
mutually agreeable.
is gonna work.
I don't, I, I wouldn't expect too much similarity because the letter we got from the board of selectmen said that the school committee's draft agreement is unacceptable.
The other thing, uh, the other thing that I would suggest is that you get a copy of the existing agreement. I don't think you've seen it.
I, I asked you.
Um, that, um, we get a copy. I'm sure I've got one at home somewhere. I actually, I actually typed it.
I've seen it, cause it's like nineteen eighties type, like courier, or, you know what I mean? So, um.
I'd be a mag card. Because I, I'd be a mag card, cause I typed it. All right, ancient history. But anyhow, if we could just get that, because you, you gotta know what's there now before you figure out where you're gonna go and, and what changes and how it affects.
Sure.
If, if we're gonna eventually take this to two town meetings, uh, people are gonna ask, so what's the board of selectmen's take on this? And so we've gotta understand where we are and where they're planning to go or what we support.
That RAC group is defunct, so that's why we're not gonna bring them in. They don't, they don't meet anymore. Okay.
But some of them will be involved because if we invite the finance committees, they were involved in that.
So the guy that is the RAC committee will show up for the finance committee. Um, what I would say is the school committee, and I know you guys didn't have a chance to see it, um, the school committee did go ahead. You know how you can track changes in Microsoft Word?
Yep.
So they did that. So you can see, but I agree, we should have the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen's unilateral agreement alongside the school committees, alongside whatever is in place right now. Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
But I appreciate, so the board agrees, we, we should meet with the school, like, we shouldn't just meet with the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we have the town administrator contact, uh, superintendent of schools to get a copy of the current, oh, excuse me, the proposed school committee regional agreement. And the, uh, and get a copy of the existing agreement and that she also contact, um, the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen and advise them that, uh, we intend to look at all three agreements and hopefully set up a meeting with boards of selectmen, school committee and, and fin coms, you know,
If they want.
to, after we've had a chance to go through all of this and we will be in touch with them.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this isn't gonna happen instantly, but anyhow.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Is that okay with you, Madam Minister?
Great with me. Great with me.
Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes. I think that's great though, because depending on what happens with the override, if it didn't pass for some reason, are we really gonna be discussing a regional agreement? So I'm, I'm, I think this is the way forward, so.
My other thought is maybe when we get everything put together, uh, if there can be some kind of a, a positive vote on that override, maybe we can all come up with something that works for everybody, instead of another committee to study something else that isn't gonna go anywhere.
Also, good news in, that's sort of in this vein, the state has sort of pledged to revisit chapter seventy funding. So that's just good news.
Yeah, they're looking at the formula.
Right.
And also there's a, we got a notification. They're looking at reevaluating the towns again. They do it every so many years to determine the town's valuation, equalized valuation, and we know that's part of our regional formula. So that, that could shift costs also.
Okay.
All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, under old business, Town Administrator Goals Memorandum of Agreement. If it's okay, I'm just gonna quickly read this and then I had one question. Uh, by a vote taken by the board of selectmen at their meeting of May thirtieth, twenty eighteen during the professional evaluation of the town administrator, the following items shall be the goals of the town administrator to be completed during fiscal year two thousand nineteen. One, assist the board of selectmen with the revision of existing policies and creation of new policies. Two, review and review, revise and review, the budget process for fiscal year twenty twenty. And three, complete procurement training for MCPPO certification. Uh, this memorandum of agreement shall be enforced and affect upon the date of signature by both parties. It shall become a part of the contract for the town administrator, the term of which expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. My one question is, since we already did technically approve this, um, is there not a sign, because Ken's gonna be voting on this. So is, should there be a line for him?
So I didn't add a line for him because technically he didn't weigh in, not technically, he didn't, uh, he didn't weigh in on the goals, so.
That's right, it came up.
It was before.
Yeah, a meeting before.
Um, so if you wanted to revote the goals, although there's no need to do that.
So are we just signing this?
Yes, this is an agreement between the two of us.
Do I have a copy to sign?
Well, you scribbled on it.
Well, I have to, we have to revise it anyway, cause I wrote review and review of the budget. Clearly, I wanna review the budget process. Um, so I'll redo this and then I'll get it in there for you.
Okay.
Just so you know, I was, I was at that meeting and I did agree with the goals.
Okay. You thought they were reasonable? All right.
He was a non-voting member.
It was a liaison at that point. All right.
And then, um, so if you wanna vote to that, and then I would just ask, because we have the two members of the open space, if you would want to consider taking that out of order. We're getting a little-
Sure, absolutely. We can do that. I'm totally fine with that. You mean Parks and Rec?
What did I just say?
Open space. Okay.
Oh, they are for open space.
Confuse me, too many hats.
So they're on Parks and Rec and they wanna be on open spaces?
No, it's Parks and Rec looking for space.
Oh.
What time is it?
Open space is a big field out here. Sorry, guys. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we take agenda item eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you, can you just take a vote on that?
But we already voted on that. Last, May thirtieth, we voted to approve it.
And I didn't vote on it.
Yeah, we didn't have, like, uh, you know.
That we take agenda item eight. Gee, out of order.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Uh, do you mind just identifying yourself, good sir?
Yes, my name is Timothy F. Ryan. I live at three one six Main Street. I happen to be the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And also this evening with me is a fellow member, Mr. David Rosa. I come to the, we come to the board of selectmen after we had a meeting last month that, um, we're in dire need of office space, um, for numerous years. Um, I don't wanna go back into revisionist history, cause I know it's getting late, but, um, for the last twenty years, um, the, the pod has been based out of town hall and has always been based out of town hall, whether it been under the guises of the veterans agent or downstairs in the planning board office. Materials were bought, um, through different vendors and such. Um, I am personally doing all this on my own personal PC, my own personal home phone, my own personal cellphone, my own personal printer, ink, um, it goes on and on. We are in need of a space in this facility. It is- We are in need of a space in this facility. It is a department, is a vital town department. We not only buy equipment and materials for our playgrounds, but we also book different events behind Town Hall and at our different ball fields. So there's a lot that's involved with that. And also it does, it would be more cohesive for us to have a space inside Town Hall because we have to do a lot of work, you know, with the, we could judge with the town administrator on certain issues and also the town accountant when we're in the midst of purchasing items. And I'm glad you mentioned the issue about the one thousand dollar item. If it was over a thousand dollars to be purchased. We just ran through that with Parks and Rec where we had to go back and forth, I'm in and out of here at Town Hall, getting paperwork in regards to contacting vendors to get three bids and then come back to have, you know, the town administrator sign off, remember the Board of Selectmen and the town accountant with purchasing. So in regards to that issue, we're happy because there are a lot of items that are over the thousand dollar range, within the five thousand dollar range or below that it would be less of the amount of paperwork that we'd have to do in order to purchase a lot of our items. So it'd be beneficial to us. Mr. Rose, if I've left anything out, please feel free to speak.
You know, I think you've touched a lot of good points and I like the worst, like to keep in mind that Mr. Ryan's resources are probably having, are taxed enough without him in some fashion subsidizing the business of the Parks and Rec. So again, I think it serves the community better, perhaps the Board of Selectmen better and for the Parks and Recs to have some office space. So again, I will join my fellow Parks and Recs commissioner in our business selecting, please take it very seriously, consideration, help us find some office space.
Thank you. So if I, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you for, A, letting us know. We're not mind readers. I didn't, I know because we speak, you know, we know each other, so we speak outside of here. But if we didn't, I would need a letter like this to let me know what was going on. So I do appreciate that. It's well timed. As you know, we're going to be finishing up the top floor of Old Town Hall, which will then free up our time where we can now focus on how to sort of reorganize or reallocate space here at Town Hall. So I guess what I would say is that conversation will start soon, hopefully, and then we can take this into consideration as part of the reallocation of space of government offices. So we're not going to ignore that. To address your concern about personal resources, I appreciate the fact that you love the town enough that you do use your own resources. I think I have sort of a compromise here on this. I think we're going to be deciding if we need to or we're going to purchase a new laptop. Our administrative assistant needs a computer, like an updated, modern computer with a lot of space, hard drive space. At that point, that frees up her desktop, which I'm totally okay with it getting professionally scrubbed and repurposed and then having that as sort of a general use that it'd be hooked up to the printer, I would presume, and then having that be a place where you can come in and print your documents so that you're not having to do it at home. I know paper's expensive. I know printer ink is expensive. I get it. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
But it still comes down to an issue of people are calling and they're calling the administrative assistant and they're asking about field use, how do we do bookings? They're calling downstairs to the Planning Board also still. They're receiving calls on this. I'm getting the calls from, you know, Mrs. Easterday, who was the administrative assistant for the Planning Board. And, you know, it would be vital to have space. I know that things are tight right now. The other issue also is what's going to happen with the Fall Police Station? If we could be put in a temporary location for now, maybe even down in the corner before they decide to knock the wall down for cable TV, it would suffice for now and then we could probably possibly move somewhere else in the later day. Just.
I wasn't, I'm sorry. I wasn't like saying no. I'm just saying, we haven't had the discussion of how we're going to repurpose and reallocate space here. And I was just saying that when that time comes, this is, that's the perfect time to have a discussion of, is there going to be office space for the Dayton Parks and Recreation Commission? That's all I was saying. I apologize. I wasn't saying no.
I know the board will take this under advisement and look at it thoroughly, so.
We appreciate your first step with regard to the laptop.
So, so in the meantime, you guys get some homework. You're going to come up with a budget. We'll be going to a Fall Town Meeting. You're going to need supplies. If you don't have funds in your current budget to do this, and if for some reason the computer thing that was mentioned falls through for whatever reason, I would put together a budget that includes a new laptop because you can always take it out, but if you don't include it and we go to Town Meeting, you're not going to get it. So plan a budget, a laptop, telephone service. Assume there's an office space somewhere. What are you going to need to operate that office? It can always be reduced, but make a comprehensive list, okay? The other thing too is while space is being reallocated or whatever, there's furniture to be considered. And we do have furniture, but by the same token, if you list a desk, a table with chairs or some, some of this stuff will be sorted out and say, we got some of this stuff already, so put this over here. We don't need to buy it. But you need a comprehensive list. So you need to put together, if you are opening an office with nothing in it, what do you need? Okay? And ballpark some numbers so that we have an idea because, again, as I said, if you don't have the money in your current budget, we've got a Fall Town Meeting coming up and we will need to know by then, before then, of what you need, how much we currently have in stock, meaning furniture or desks or whatever, and what it is that really has to be purchased. All right? So get some homework.
I would just like to add, I just want to add, so what you are doing, printing, anything that is done for town business, you can be reimbursed for that cost. Save your receipts.
I know, I haven't.
Take a ream of paper for your, for that. You know, I won't advise that all the time, but if you need to make a bunch of flyers because the Easter egg hunt's coming up, you know, take some paper. But keep your receipts and you can be reimbursed for that cost. So you shouldn't.
I haven't personally tapped the P and T account. I just had felt it's not necessary.
Everyone needs to know that, that you are.
That is a good point because I've heard from other members, not on Parks and Rec, just like other committees, that have said, well, why am I printing? And not even in a negative way, but just like, is there a way? And that's what's kind of sparked the discussion of if we get Karen a new computer, then we can have some sort of a general computer for use like a library would have.
But for right now, make believe you've got a space somewhere that's totally empty and make a list of everything that you need in that room to make it into an office and get cost estimates as best you can. Include furniture and utilities, meaning your telephone, whatever. And once the list, that's going to be the, the opening list, and from that we can look to see what's available and it'll whittle down and figure out X number of dollars are needed because this has to be purchased because we don't have it. We can't provide these things, okay?
There are desks though. There's a couple of desks.
Yeah, but, but he still needs to make a complete list so you don't leave anything out. All right?
You want, you want to ask for more and have more than what you might need.
Everything you need to open and then like you said, well, we've got a desk, we've got a table, we've got chairs. So it comes off the cost side because you already got it. But you're going to end up with a net cost that you're going to ask for.
Do you know what you have in your budget right now?
P and T, just off the top of my head, the budget just passed the Town Meeting.
It's a rough.
Twenty-five hundred right now in P and T. That's just, so there's plenty of money that's out there we could utilize, you know, if we had to purchase, you know, a desk or some chairs or whatever it may be. There is filing cabinets downstairs that I utilize right now for.
Yeah, so you may not have to ask for more.
Yeah. I think, I think that the Board of the Selectmen taking this under advisement that, I'm sure you guys have made the right decision.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we, and just so you know, you'll be a part of the decision because we would obviously bring, we're going to have to discuss how to reallocate the space and that'll be a discussion that happens with the departments. So you'll be involved.
And the space is going to also be dependent on what it is they want in this, in the space. So.
Absolutely. Anything else, Mr. Ryan?
Yes, before I do leave, I'd like to just touch on an issue that was brought up earlier this evening about the rodent infestation in North Dayton. Parks and Rec, we were never notified that there was a problem that was in it area because we do have a playground that's adjacent to the neighborhood. And I did speak with the chairman this evening and he said, right now it is not a point or an issue where we would have to close that playground down because of that, that problem. You know, we just don't want any children getting bit or whatever the issue may be up there. So right now at this point, just to let the neighbors know that it's fine for, you know, the kids to go in and use the playground, it's not an issue. So we're not shutting the playground down.
Just don't leave any food behind. No snacks.
Exactly. No snacks. Don't, you know, clean up after yourselves as you've always done in the past and just be, you know.
Take it out.
Yep. Just carry it in, carry out and just be alert to your surroundings. That's all.
So the pipe over there was scoped and there was no evidence.
All right. I'm just trying to just, you know, place some of the fears of the neighbors in the neighborhood.
When I alluded to the problem we had, you know where I lived, right next door to a playground, and the problem was never anywhere except under the rabbit coops. And that's where we addressed it, you know, so.
Grandma had kittens, we had chickens, hundreds of thousands of chickens up on Richmond Hill for years and there was always rats there. But Grandma always had the cats that would take care of the population. So thank you. I don't want to hold you guys off.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we take the request of the Parks and Recreation Commission for office space under advisement to be discussed at a future meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes. New business. We have to review, discuss and act on accepting the resignation of Ken Pacheco from the Zoning Board of Appeals, the forty B Committee and the Cannabis Policy Advisory Committee. Selectman Pacheco.
Yeah, so I wrote a letter to the, to you, Mr. Chairman, July fifth, twenty eighteen. Dear Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for appointing me to the Zoning Board of Appeals for seventeen years. I have enjoyed my time working with the Public Building Commission of Members and Office Managers. As a result of the June twenty eighth Selectmen's election, I have, I am resigning from the ZBA. As I was the representative for the ZBA on the forty B Committee and the Cannabis Policy Advisory Board, I am resigning from these committees also. I would ask the Board of Selectmen to appoint me as the Board of Selectmen representative for the forty B Committee. And if I can just add that.
Of course you can.
Joe Pacheco was chairman for fifteen years. He was a mentor to me, provided me with a lot of knowledge and information about how the zoning board works. And as mentioned earlier, my deepest sympathy goes to him and his family for the loss of his wife. And I enjoyed working with all the other members and there's a great group of members there presently. And we have a great administrative assistant that was recently hired and they will survive and I look forward to us working with the ZBA in the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, it's nice to be working again. We worked on the ZBA together and so life comes full circle.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation, Kenneth Pacheco from the Zoning Board of Appeals, the forty B Committee and the Cannabis Policy Advisory Committee with thanks and appreciation for as many years of service.
I'm going to step down and second that motion. Discussion.
We only appointed him to one job. He quit three. Something wrong.
Addition by subtraction.
How did he do that?
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes. B.
No, excuse me. Is there a, you mentioned the forty B. Does anyone on the Board of Selectmen represent the board or on the forty B?
Yes, in the past, it's been Tom Pius.
So we should, so we should, we should appoint you as the Selectmen's representative?
That's what I'm asking.
That's what I thought you said. Okay.
Because when I joined the forty B, I was the representative for the Zoning Board of Appeals and Tom Pius was the representative for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And he was there for years. I believe he's still on the board as a representative of the Planning Board.
Okay.
And the Zoning Board of Appeals next week will ask someone to become a member of the forty B Committee. For short, a few members, Charlie Mello is also in the talus or members of this. So I'm asking that, since I'm familiar with the Zoning Board, affordable housing, that I be the member?
He just saved himself. He still owes us. Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Kenneth Pacheco to the, to be the Selectmen's representative to the forty B Committee.
I'm going to step down and second that motion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes.
And I just want to note that remaining a member of the Cemetery Commission as well as the Historical Commission, those are non-paid appointments and I would like to continue working with them.
Absolutely. Good luck. No, just kidding. Just kidding. Okay, new business. Ratify executive order for Stonewall repair at Town Hall. Just so my colleagues are aware, this is something that I had signed off on when we were still just two of us and I believe Selectman Goulart was on vacation. So that's something.
The North Wall? Got hit again?
Nope, this is Town Hall.
Right here.
Yep.
Right next to us.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't notice it for a long time either and I felt really bad about myself.
Well, I'm part of your memory, like, you know.
You're talking about at the entrance.
Right here, yeah.
The North Entrance?
Yes.
That's called the North Wall?
That's the North Entrance.
Oh.
The driveway that comes in. It's the Stonewall on the north side. That's been hit before. Yeah, that got crashed into before. Remember, Mr. and Mrs. Lala rebuilt that wall.
All right.
You want the guy that crashed into it?
No.
Then you made an executive order to fix it. That'd be horrible.
Somebody crashed into, somebody crashed into a fence at Saint Nicholas, broke the fence, hit the tree. Did you see the tree? There's a chunk of bark this big out of it. The gate to the south, the west gate? I don't know how they hit the gate because it's open. It's just a decorative fence. Then there's a chunk taken out of the tree and they kept going. I don't know how they walked away. Anyhow.
Accepting motions.
Can I see that so I can make it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the repair to the Stonewall near the North driveway and award the contract to provide the work to Teescape at a cost of one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Was the, was the driver identified and is there insurance money?
Yes.
Oh, very good.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion passes.
That's the second crash. You may have to stop putting reflectors and signs up there sometime.
Guardrail. All right. Ratify, D, new business. Ratify executive order to carry over vacation hours for the Assistant Town Clerk. This was a request received by the Town Clerk back in June for the Assistant Town Clerk Pam Waller to carry over nine vacation hours into the next fiscal year. I did accept this on June twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, so we're just ratifying the executive order.
I thought we, I thought we voted to do that.
That wasn't in the, the long lengthy list. It came the next week.
Oh, and we weren't.
There's a, there's a time limit, timeframe on this and you had already left, so that's why this was.
Because we got that late, so we apologize.
So, let me have that.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify and approve the request of the Assistant Town Clerk to carry over nine hours of vacation time into FY nineteen.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it. That motion passes. New business, E. Ratify payroll changes and increases voted at Finance Committee Meeting. Mrs. Brady, I know there was a sheet on this. Thank you. Thank you, Selectman Goulart. For the, you can explain. It explains what it is here.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the following changes that were voted at the Finance Committee Meeting and also some of these were approved at Town Meeting. Payroll changes. Rosalynn Grassy, Board of Health, she's not the administrative assistant, isn't she the office?
Office manager. Yep.
Office manager.
Good catch.
Increase to thirty-five hours per week. All these positions are funded, folks, just for your information. Bethany Collins, Town Nurse, increase from twenty-five to thirty-five dollars per hour. Todd Pilling, Health Agent, increase from twenty-five to Todd Pilling, Health Agent, increase from twenty-five to thirty-five dollars per hour.
Thirty.
Hours.
Mm-hmm, she said hours.
No, thirty.
No, it says thirty-five.
It says thirty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought it was thirty.
It's thirty. That was what was discussed at Finance Committee, so if that's what we're, it's thirty dollars an hour, that was the compromise.
Okay, let me just change that.
And that's what was funded.
For both the Town Nurse and the Health Agent?
Uh, no, this was just the Health Agent, I'm sorry.
Alright.
But that's what was funded.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, thank you.
Let me just correct that, Karen, please. Todd Pilling, Health Agent, increase from twenty-five to thirty dollars per hour. Karen Brady, Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen, five percent increase.
I would just ask that you consider if you, if the Board so chooses, whether or not to make this retroactive to July 1st of this year.
Oh, and these, these should be effective July 1st, 2018.
Did I say radioactive or retroactive?
Retroactive, yeah.
I'll second.
I would have laughed if you said.
You say radioactive.
No, we all would have laughed.
Been a long day for me.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion passes. Just so the public is aware, I do apologize for the rather lengthy meeting, we have not had a meeting in a month, so, thank you for bearing with us, thank you Cable. F, new business, award Sursage bid for DW Services, Madam Administrator?
DPW.
DPW, excuse, what did I say?
DW.
DW, I'm thinking of Arthur.
So, Sursage is our public purchasing consortium and because we joined later on in a year, we missed out on DPW Services contracts. However, because we're part of this group, we have the opportunity to ask for special consideration from these vendors and they would extend their price to us. And DPW Services is something that's a bid out and goes off-year, it goes out in February, so, excuse me, it's October. February, February, because we missed it. Okay, so, anyway, these are for two vendors. It's PJ Keating for Hot Mix Asphalt and then chlorinated rubber, rubber traffic line painting went to Markings Inc. So, here I am asking you to award these two bids to these two companies and then sign off and then Tom will be able to purchase what he needs to purchase.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I move that we award the contract to provide the following materials to PJ Keating of Acushnet Massachusetts. Hot Mix Asphalt at sixty-three dollars and sixty-five cents per ton, bi-tulman tack coat, two dollars per gallon, handwork, one hundred and fifty dollars per ton and saw cutting, one dollar per linear foot. For, these aren't total contracts, are these estimated amounts?
So, this would be, this total value is based upon, I believe, what?
These are estimated quantities, so they're not fixed.
They're not what we're gonna pay.
Okay, alright. And that the Board award the contract for chlorinated rubber traffic line painting to Markings Incorporated of Pembroke, Mass. As follows, four-inch yellow center line, three-point-eight-four cents per linear feet, four-inch white line, three-point-eight-four cents per linear feet, four-inch yellow hatch lines, thirty-eight cents per linear foot, crosswalks, thirty-eight and a half cents per linear foot, stop line, thirty-eight and a half cents per linear foot, stop words, one dollar each. For a letter or the word stop, or the whole word stop?
Yeah, we have to use a stop. Are you sure that you're reading that right, is it point zero?
It's point zero-three-eight-four.
Yeah, point zero.
Not three.
All these other numbers.
The first two numbers, yes.
Yes.
But, those are not, when you have a dollar, when you have a zero and a point-three-eight, you're talking three-point-eight-four cents. It's three and a fraction, so I'm reading them as three point, you just moved the decimal. It's three-point-eight-four cents, three-point-eight-four, it's three and a, it's not four cents, it's three cents and a fraction.
Right.
Okay? Stop words, you said you're not using them, what does that mean?
We haven't used, we haven't used the word stop.
That's where you're painting it, right on the pavement.
But if you use them, they're on the bid list, you can do it. Okay, alright, thank you. Parking lines, sixteen cents a linear foot. Okay, TS and LS.
Ts and Ls? What's that mean?
When they're using that, that's just what they did for Sursage.
Because some other communities are gonna use these items.
Oh, okay.
Because we're part of a group, that's.
That's what the whole contract was.
Oh.
We just wanted to.
What are they?
We're just after the double yellow line.
What are they? Do you know, Mister Ferry?
No, I do not know.
Oh, okay, see that. Sorry. This is a test.
It's probably the shared road signs.
Directional arrows, federal, seventeen ninety-five each, that's seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents each. Eight-foot only signs, twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents each, three-foot only signs, ten dollars each. Eight-foot school signs, thirty-five dollars each, traffic islands, ten dollars each. Railroad crossings, we don't have any of those, seventy-five dollars each. Removal of existing paint lines, four cents per linear, no, per square foot, excuse me, four cents per square foot and grinding for idling, twenty cents per square foot.
That was a motion.
Is that forty, yeah, is that forty cents, no, four cents.
Yeah, when you move the decimal, it's forty cents a square foot.
You're right.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Next.
Mister Ferry, just a question, so, even though you didn't put down a guesstimate, anything that we just approved, if you need it, you can buy it off this list, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
And just so the public.
Except Ts and Ls, because you don't know what they are. If you buy any Ts and Ls, we wanna know what they are, okay?
So, just so the public knows, we've completed the first page of a four-page agenda.
Correct.
So, we're starting the second page.
A lot of these are announcements, though, so we're gonna get through them. A lot of these are road cut permits, so we're gonna breeze, easy breezy through this.
All the test stuff is done.
Yeah, exactly. I also think we're, we've satisfied new business H. I'm pretty sure the Board of Health concerns were what we discussed, so we're done with that. Next, request by Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witnesses to waive building permit fee. I actually, I forget where I, where I put this.
You want the letter?
Yes, we got a request from the Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witnesses to waive the permit fee for the sign, I believe it's a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. I thought I saw that on the bottom, right here.
Yes, the minimum, right.
I guess my question is more procedural for you, Madam Administrator. If we agreed to waive the fee, are we in any way violating like separation of church and state here?
Only if you chose not to do it for any other nonprofit, so if wags came in.
So, we traditionally.
Okay, we have waived various permit fees, the last one was the electrical permit for the community church, I believe.
But we do honor them for the other parishes and churches.
Yeah, and Mister, Mister Aggie has said to me before he left, he had to go to the Board of Health meeting. He said that it's okay with him to waive the fee if the Board decides to do it.
That's what he said, yeah, he sent us in the mail, that's who we got it from.
I would just say, you know, you're not in any danger if you do it, as long as it's extended to all nonprofits or similar.
And then similarly, the other would be true, where you would reject them all.
Yeah, I know we do it for the Lions.
But we've already accepted a bunch, so, it sounds like that's what we do as a town and I appreciate you kinda letting us know what the prior practice has been. Okay?
That was also a concern of mine, whether we're just doing it for religious groups, but I know that the antique historical societies have been waived by different boards and stuff like that.
Lions gets these.
The athletic conflicts up there on Maple Street.
So, it's all your nonprofits, your community groups.
Just making sure we're being like consistent going forward, that's all.
So, I'll make a motion that we waive the fee for the sign of a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the Jehovah Witnesses, Kingdom Hall of the Jehovah Witnesses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, let's take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. New business J, deciding on right-to-farm sign locations. I did speak to, thank you for answering my text, Superintendent Ferry, by all means, you didn't have to, but you did tell me there were gonna be six signs, so, what I did was, and I, I, we're gonna discuss this, it'll be an organic discussion. I did contact the Aggie School, I just had this like sneaking suspicion that they would want one on that strip of, I don't know, on either side.
Well, when you enter Dayton.
Exactly, entering Dayton from over the bridge, it's a beautiful view, I just figured they would want one. I reached out to Superintendent Sands, she did call me back, they definitely want one. So, I would definitely think we would wanna put them at like entrances or exits to Dayton. So, I, my firm feet in the, feet in the ground stance is at least one of them should go somewhere on the right-hand side after the bridge. Is everybody okay with that?
We're entering Dayton.
When you enter Dayton.
Right, not exits.
And there's all that farmland.
Right, we don't want exits by leaving.
We'll leave that up to Mister Ferry to decide where's the best place.
In other, if this matters, in other communities, I've seen them around a prominent farm, like a large farm and at every entrance into the community.
And I think that's totally reasonable. My only, the only question I guess I would have, and if anybody has any strong feelings, please let me know. I agree, they should be at entrances to the town, especially if you're like coming from Taunton, so it makes sense to put one on Somerset Ave. But is it a little out of place, because there's no farms near like Dunkin' Donuts, Princess House, the vet's office, Reese's?
Maybe that's all the more reason.
The Rehoboth right-to-farm on Route 44, it's, there's nothing there, it's near the high tension lines. What do you think, Mister Ferry?
Yeah, Rehoboth's tied to the town lines. I just put them off in similar locations for Lions. One on the Berkeley Bridge coming in, each end of Williams, each end of 138.
Route 44?
It's not on 44 for Lions, but that's what number six would go either.
Perfect.
Do we have space on those stands to just add the right-to-farm sign, so there's not like a bunch of?
Two things.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, they should decide, I would want them to weigh in, but I do think it would better on a four-by-four pole.
Me too. I don't want it like an afterthought on a sign that already exists.
Right, so I'm not, I'm not looking for that either, but I don't, this is a personal preference, like in a beautiful landscape such as coming in from the Berkeley Bridge, dotting the landscape with signs, so if we could consolidate in some way, that's all, that's all my point is, but I agree, they need to weigh in, I'm not trying to make the decision.
No, no, I understand, no, no, well, your job is to give us the recommendation, so.
So, I suggest both, both end of Williams, both end of 138, the eastbound of 44, the town line and that's your entry into Dayton.
I think.
At this time, if you want more.
I think that's fine, we'll, we'll start with the, and then, you know, I don't know. I did, can I tell you one thing, though, because I haven't seen you Superintendent Ferry? I got a lot of feedback from residents who want to purchase them for their. Okay, alright, sorry about that, I didn't give them your number, I promise.
They want it for their property?
Yeah.
So, I, I was actually, I saw that and I was thinking what people could do is get lawn signs that shows, and some, they don't have to say what the right-to-farm says and this would be a complete private initiative for you to do at home, but a lawn sign that said, you know, we're a farming community or something like that, that shows their support and something, oh, what do we have?
Oh.
Oh, very good.
Oh, my God!
Love it, how did you hide that there, that's unusual.
I.
I love it.
I was away, I'm sorry.
Cable, can you, can you get the sign?
Oh, my gosh, I want one for my office.
There you go.
I totally understand what the residents are saying.
I want it on Town Hall somewhere.
I'd put it on a sticker, like a.
Tom, that is beautiful, it's just like, that's the most beautiful thing I've ever seen.
Backed up the audience.
I love the font, everything, I'm like so happy.
It was an amicable discussion, I promise. Tom, that is beyond my wildest imagination of how awesome this sign could be.
That would look, that would look good on another sign pole.
Who did the sign?
It's gotta have a tone, it's gotta have a tone.
So, I, I have an idea, who did the sign? You know, you can tell me later. I've got a great idea.
Do you like it?
I like it. It's kinda, it's kinda, I mean, those aren't the signs we're gonna put entering into Dayton.
So, this is a three-by-thirty, going on a two-by-two pole doesn't make sense. They can, they can wear the pole or the sign, four-by-four makes more sense and it's more aesthetic pleasing.
So, we have six of those?
Six of these at this time.
I love that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm envisioning the entrances into town.
It's bigger than the one from the Dayton signs.
But now it doesn't make sense to put it next to the Lions, like now.
But it could go on the same pole, because it's still part of the community too, but it's not a four-by-four pole.
Right, right, okay, alright.
We could switch the poles.
How big is the Lions?
We have not lit this town with signs also.
Right, and that's my big thing.
Yeah, you don't want it.
Take down the, take down the speed sign, nobody obeys it anyhow.
Perfect, well, that's.
Take down the speed sign?
Yeah, do be basic.
It's so true.
So, Mister Ferry's proposal is both ends of Williams, both ends of.
Did he say 138?
By the sign that.
And then the entering east from 44 and then over the bridge, entering into Dayton from Berkeley. I think that is, you couldn't pick better spot.
That's a good spot, that was a good spot to start and if anybody else knows of a place, just let us know.
Absolutely. I'm accepting motions.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the sign as presented by Mister Ferry and that they be located, the right-to-farm sign as presented by Mister Ferry and that they be located, two on Route 138 at the entrances, one on Route 44 East, one at the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge and two on Williams Street at either end.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes. Mister Ferry, Mrs. Ferry, thank you so much for all your work on right-to-farm, very appreciated. Okay, moving on to new business K, we have a couple of road cut permits. This is for a road cut permit request for Columbia Gas at 863 Center Street. They're requesting permission to excavate for gas maintenance repair, install new gas service, four-foot by six-foot by ten-foot, ten-foot road cut short side. And this is from Brady Rogers at Integration Center. Sorry.
We're gonna do all three at the same time?
Yeah, we could, yep. The second one is for a, again, request permission to excavate for gas maintenance to install new gas service, a four-foot by six-foot by thirty-foot road cut long side at 1480 Pine Street and another request for permission to excavate for gas maintenance repair and install new gas service at 250 Jennifer Lane and the type of work is a four-foot by six-foot by fifteen-foot road cut short side.
Mister Chairman, I move that the Board approve the following road cut permit requests from Columbia Gas located at 863 Center Street, 1480 Pine Street and 250 Jennifer Lane.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Sure, Mister Ferry?
Grab your approval?
Wait, except for Jennifer Lane is not one of our streets yet.
Oh, oops.
Let's take that one out.
Mrs. Brady, would you, would you strike the, the reference to Jennifer Lane? So, now there's the question, who does the gas company contact, the developer?
Developer.
Okay, so, I'm gonna let them know.
It would still require a trench permit, I'm assuming filed with the building inspector, because it's a sizable, it's over Jackie's law, so.
Okay, so, Mrs. Brady, that is just for 863 Center Street and 1480 Pine Street, okay?
Alright, we have a motion and a second, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Last under new business is item N, vote to issue permits for field use at Town Hall. One is for Vinnie the Bubble Guy on July 13th, 2018. One, and they have received all the departmental sign-offs. And the other is for Ed the Wizard, Vinnie's brother, and that's gonna be for July 20th, 2018, a weekly.
Are they really brothers?
No, okay, that was a joke, you guys.
I want, like, that's amazing.
I wanna know what the Bubble Guy does.
I think he's gonna blow big bubbles, small bubbles.
So, I've had to go through these things, because my kids think they're great, so, it's like crazy large bubbles and like cool things.
Like huge ones, yeah.
And do they pop, like? And do they pop like?
They pop, and then they get on you. Like if they go over you, it's like you're, you know, somebody sneezed on you.
Uh, and just.
I'm really selling it.
So my colleagues know, they did receive all the appropriate sign-offs, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, Building, Police, Fire. They ran the gamut, so, um, and this is from the Dayton Public Library as well.
Oh, both events, I guess?
Oh, we also have, I guess we'll do this one together with it, a day in the colonial, uh, day in the life of colonial Dayton, which I believe is, uh, from the Historical Society.
Actually, it's the public.
Uh, the public library.
That's also the library? I'm sorry.
It's from the library, the Thirteenth Continental as well as the, as well as the Lafayette Murphy House, uh, is participating in this.
Okay.
Are you gonna do that? Are you gonna be there?
Yes, I'm gonna be there. I'll be melting musket balls, the lead, to make musket balls. I'll be making Mr. Ferry's rifle.
And, um, just note on day in the life of colonial Dayton, they also received the, um, necessary sign-offs, and the date of that is Sunday, July twenty-second. So I'm accepting motions.
Okay, so I'm gonna do the first two. Um, you will probably wanna abstain from the, the.
The third one?
Thing, cause you're participating.
Sure.
Just, okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request of Vinnie the Bubble Guy, who used the Town Hall field on July thirteenth. And Ed the Wizard, for use of the Town Hall field on July the twentieth. Both events sponsored by the Dayton Public Library, or is it Pots and Red?
Public Library.
It's Public Library, okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request from the Dayton Library to use the field behind Town Hall, Sunday, July twenty-second, for a day in the life of colonial Dayton.
I'm gonna happily step down and second that motion. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none? Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Correspondence. Um, we have an email from a resident regarding the Dayton Fire Department. Um, I'm just gonna read the actual text that's intended to be read. It's from Jack Taylor, Dayton resident. Uh, after, so he had a bee sting episode for anybody who might, may not know Jack. He is hyperallergic. Um, so it's an issue if he's getting stung by a bee. He said, "After his bee sting, after my bee sting episode today, I got a ride in the Dayton ambulance down to Charlton, to Hospital in Fall River. Alex Green and Matt Silver were the EMTs. Knowledgeable, very professional and personable. I was very impressed, but certainly not surprised. Marcy, his wife, and I drove to Station One, and Tom Adiris and Chief McGee jumped right in to help. We should all be very proud of our Dayton Fire Department and the leadership of Chief McGee and his entire crew. Today it was Alex and Matt who showed their stuff, as I'm sure the others do every day. Thanks again to everybody. You make me proud to call Dayton my home." So, thank you very much, uh, former selectman Taylor. Um, absolutely, I would echo these sentiments. We are, I'm fortunate, every day, um, we have Dayton Fire Department and also Dayton Police Department, Highway Department, um, keeping us safe. So, thank you all, and, uh, Alex and Matt, congratulations and very good work.
And the chief and Tom too.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Good work. Uh, next, under correspondence. Uh, we have correspondence from Beacon Hospice asking for volunteers, um, dated June fourteenth, twenty eighteen. Um, Erin Hassel is a volunteer coordinator for Beacon Hospice. They need volunteers in our area to spend time with our, with their terminally ill patients. Um, so if that interests you, if you have a passion for caring for others, uh, please reach out to Ms. Hassel at five zero eight, three two four, one nine zero zero, extension one zero eight. You can also email her at erin.hassel@amedisys.com. And there also is a flyer as well. So we're gonna make sure that's hung up, um, and we'll have it readily available. Madam Minister?
I was just gonna say, there is a, it's not this flyer, it's something different, but it has the contact information, and it's hanging up, um, on the window, so if Town Hall's closed, you can see it in that lobby. And if it's open, just come on in and you can rip off the little tab that has the contact information and you can volunteer.
Next on the agenda is correspondence, um, that was sent from parents and residents of the community specifically to the school committee. Um, I'm not going to read this item for the simple reason of there was a post-it note on this when it got copied, and so, um, a lot of the text is not legible. We do have a copy of this letter in the Board of Selectmen's office. If you are interested, please feel free to request a copy. Um, basically, they want to know, um, which positions are going to be cut and why. Um, so that's kind of the nature of the letter. Um, I don't think that's been worked out yet, um, so we don't have any answers.
I think it's gonna depend on how that vote goes.
Correct, and it will depend on the.
The vote is what?
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth.
Yep.
My concern about this letter is, I'm not sure if we have a policy on this, but there's no signature. It's, there's no names on it, so I'm troubled by the, that we have a letter that someone hasn't signed, or people haven't signed, and they're entering into our records.
It's also, we have to keep it as a record, but no, I totally agree, which is why I'm, I mean, we can't see the letter on the right side anyway, but yeah, that's another reason why I'm not gonna read it. Is that okay with everybody?
It's really addressed also to the school committee. It's not really out of.
We got CC'd, yep. Alright, um, what I will do is we did get a letter from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I am also not gonna read this letter, but I will tell you what it is. Um, we, the superintendent forwarded us this letter that he received from the state, the Office of School Finance and District Support, um, basically allowing, authorizing Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District, um, to continue its operations for the current fiscal year through the one-twelfth budget process. So that is what this letter is authorizing them. We do have a copy of it on file. If anybody is willing or wants to read it, absolutely, uh, we can get you a copy of that. Is it okay to skip that?
Of course it is. Actually, this is one of my recommendations.
I know, I know, I'm trying to be compliant over here. Alright. Trying to be, I don't wanna be in trouble. Alright, uh, next. We have the, uh, Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission has notified the town of hearings for, one, for Almeida's Country Store. Um, it's sent directly to them. We do get a copy. Um, there is going to be a hearing at their, uh, two thirty-nine Causeway Street, first floor, Boston, Massachusetts location on Wednesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at eleven thirty AM. Um, it is to see if violations have occurred in the operation of this business. This particular one looks like it was related to, uh, lottery sales. Um, so that is one. The other one is for Vinayac, uh, Mount Hope Liquors. Um, again, notify, notification of another hearing that's again gonna be held at the two thirty-nine Causeway Street, first floor, Boston, Massachusetts office of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. The date is Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at one thirty PM. Um, this public hearing will be to determine, um, if any violations took place regarding, um, permitting an illegality on licensed premises, uh, specifically sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age. The date of the alleged violation was Wednesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, at approximately three fifteen PM. For whatever reason, if anybody is interested in attending these hearings, we do have this information, um, and we'd be happy to supply you with it.
Do we get notified of the results of these hearings?
Yes, so, um, this is, uh, the ABCC will do a sting once a year, and this occurred. They have the opportunity to go to the commission and, you know, state their case, and then the commission determines whether or not to issue a fine or waive it if it's a first offense, just depending on what happens at that hearing. And then it'll be sent to us, um, same thing. Some, some have repeated, not here, this is just in general, have repeated infractions, and they'll be forced to close. So there's a progressive discipline there from the ABCC.
So we don't take any action out of it?
Nope, this is just an FYI to you as the licensing authority.
The other thing that we may get, well, we got notified for in the past because we were the Board of Health. Um, uh, sale of cigarette or tobacco products to minors. That's another, I'll call it sting operation that takes place, and, uh, it's similar, progressive, what can happen.
Right, and I'm sure the CCC will do the same thing when, uh, that's all up and running.
Announcements. Uh, first, we have a list of vacancies. Um, let's split these up. Um, Selectman Pacheco, do you wanna do the first couple? We'll have Selectman Goulart.
Sure.
Um, finish it up.
So we have Board of Committee openings in the Capital, Capital Outlay Committee, the Forty-B Committee, devel- the Development and Industrial Commission, Hearing Clerk, Insurance Advisory Committee. We alternate, now we just appointed a bunch of people. We still need, second, third, uh, another person alternate.
What's this? What is this?
Yep.
Just an alternate.
Sure. I- IT Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Soil Conservation Commission, and Stone Water Committee.
Perfect. And we'll make sure this is.
Stone Water Committee, who left?
Heidi, Mrs. Baki.
No, 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 she's, she got replaced.
She was, um.
Tom Pires replaced her from the planning board, and Todd Pilling became the Board of Health rep.
Oh, okay.
So, so we're all set.
Perfect. I had a vacancy on there too, so I'm glad we got that clarified. This is, uh, these volunteer opportunities are listed on the town's job vacancies page, which, um, myself and Town Minister Aaronstein update, uh, routinely, so. You can actually apply online. You don't need to come down here if you don't want to.
The Soil Conservation Commission.
They do have a member. I went through that list today as a matter of fact.
Well, what are we? Aren't we?
We are, mm-hmm.
But we have, we appointed Mr. Pacheco. He's still got a vacancy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I believe.
It's four members that you appoint, it's the three of you and then four members, so I, I thought there was a person, but he just doesn't show up. But maybe I, I might be making that up.
I didn't see his list on, name on the list.
Mr. Agia, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Frenette, or an alternate, and Mr. Mello was here, so.
Mr. Pacheco.
That's right, Joe Pacheco's the other one. So we, I, I think we got a full committee.
I don't think the number she's giving is correct.
No.
No.
Not for, he's, he's been at our soil meeting.
Oh, okay, alright.
But there was also Bob Mullin was on it.
That's who I was thinking of.
So I think that's what the vacancy is, cause I didn't see his name on the list at all.
So what we'll do is revise our list, review it, and make sure that it's updated and complete before posting, but that is a, um, the other thing people should know is you can subscribe to, and you'll get an email anytime that page is updated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alright.
I thought we appointed the hearing clerk.
Mm-mm. Nope, definitely not. Cause I, I just looked through it today. I, no, I did. I don't know why. I went through the whole list, cause I was thinking. Okay.
What is Attorney Gay? What's Attorney Gay?
He's something else. No, there's, his title is something else.
Hearing officer. That's not the hearing clerk?
Mm-mm. Nope.
So, okay, I've got some questions on that too.
We'll figure it out. We'll, let's move on, we'll move on. Alright, Selectman Pacheco? Continue.
On the announcements, okay, so the, uh, the Dayton Fire Association will be having Toucha Truck, uh, will be hosting an event on the Second Annual Toucha Truck Event on September eighth, twenty eighteen, at nine AM to three PM. Rain date is September fifteenth, twenty eighteen, at AM to three PM, on the grounds of the Manheim, New England, one twenty-three Williams for North Dayton. In addition, the Dayton Fire Association will be accepting cash checks, donations on behalf of three-year, three-year-old Grant Mediris of Dayton. Grant has acute myeloid leukemia, and recently, did I say that correctly? And recently had a bone marrow transplant in his colony at Boston Children's Hospital recovering. Let's show Grant how much the Dayton community can come together. Please make checks out to Dayton Fire Association. Forget the toy trucks. Here, children could get a close-up, close-up look at the real things. Climb aboard many supersized vehicles in a safe, protected environment. I know I was supposed to read the whole thing, probably, because you want me to cut short on stuff like this, but, uh, uh, there was some additional information that I thought, uh, we should be mentioning.
I don't know, I appreciate you reading the whole thing. While we're on the topic, I just wanted to, we haven't had a meeting since it happened, but I did wanna thank, um, all of the town departments, all of the other towns, our town, Dayton Fire Department, Dayton Police Department, um, for participating in bringing Grant home from the hospital. Um, I know it meant a lot to a lot of people, especially Grant's family, um, but it meant a lot to, when I drove home, I couldn't attend, I was at work. But I remember I drove home around five-thirty, Grant had already been home a couple hours, and there were still a bunch of, um, houses that had like welcome home Grant signs, like homemade signs.
Out front, um, when it came by, um, off the top of my head, besides Dayton, Berkeley, Rainham, Taunton, um, Dartmouth was the one that was farther south. Um, it, and they had, uh, yeah, Rehoboth, they had, and they had multiple vehicles too. So it was, it was a long procession.
I know. Someone posted a video. I'm like, it's ten minutes long.
Well, what was interesting was, we were standing on the wall, and of course, they were on the south side, but all the traffic going northbound had all pulled over, because all I could see was all these lights and things.
We're not even gonna try.
But they must've thought it was a big emergency, you know? Cause we were saying they've all pulled over. But it was nice.
Absolutely. I just, I'm glad we live in a town that everyone matters, every life matters, every voice matters. Um, and, um, to see our Public Safety Department, you know, these people have to be tough on a daily basis. You know, they have to be tough with the public. So to see them, you know, with such big hearts, I think it meant a lot to everybody. So thank you very much.
And we wish Grant the best of luck.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll do the next item, since I can't do the next two. Uh, the Dayton Water District has issued a water ban during the hours of nine AM to five PM for irrigation systems. Handheld watering is permitted.
Um, there will be a Colonial Life encampment, encampment at Dayton Old Town Hall on Sunday, July twenty-second at one PM. Come and experience eighteenth-century life. You will see medical equipment and hear how doctors perform, hosted by the Thirtieth Continental Regiment. And did you say there was somebody else involved?
It's the Durfee Lafayette.
Oh, thirteen, I'm sorry.
It's the thirteenth, yeah.
The Durfee Lafayette House is just.
Yes.
Uh, Fall River?
Fall River.
Okay.
Uh, and this is a grant from the Dayton Cultural Council that's paying for this.
Very good. The Dayton Historical Society is celebrating fifty years, July twenty-first, at the Winslow Davis Museum from eleven AM to two PM at twelve seventeen Williams Street, Dyke Mass. There will be refreshments, old-fashioned games, photos, and memorabilia.
Perfect. Um, Selectmen's reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
Uh, yeah, just do this quick, cause it's, it's long, and the minutes will come out, you can see them when they're finished. I attended, uh, on June twentieth, I attended the, uh, DEP quarterly meeting of, uh, Common Recyclables, Stoud- the State Outreach Plan, and an update on the recycling dividends program. Uh, Kathy Marissa, who came and met with us about solid waste disposal and all of that, uh, she reviewed some of the information. Um, there is, uh, there will be grant money available. Uh, Dayton is in good position, and she wants us to apply this coming year. And, um, I've just gotta send her my notes, cause she conducted the first part of the meeting and she missed part of it. So, when these come out, I'll make sure they're emailed to everybody, just so you know what went on. These are quarterly meetings, and normally I don't get to go, but we didn't have an MMA meeting on the second Wednesday, uh, and this one got moved to another date, and it all worked out, so, anyhow. I would like to mention briefly, MMA. Uh, we're all, uh, committee's all done until the fall, but I would like to publicly recognize Victoria Sclafani, who has been our, uh, liaison with MMA, and who has been a representative from MMA to our committee on Environment and the Energy. She has accepted a position in Washington DC, and we'll finish up at MMA in August, but, um, uh, for anyone and everyone who knows, uh, the work that MMA does in this committee, thank you very much, Victoria. It was great working with you.
Alright. Thank you, Selectman Goulart. Thank you for being a part of MMA and part of those committees.
Been a great resource to us.
Absolutely. MMA in general has been great. Um, okay, uh, acknowledgements. First, the town of Dayton would like to acknowledge Mr. James Jimmy Howland, uh, who did retire after many, many years of public service in different capacities on June twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Enjoy your retirement, it's well-deserved. Firefighter EMT, Mr. Justin Dagnall, and firefighter Dylan Borges graduated from the Call slash Volunteer Firefighter Academy class, number zero seven zero in June. Congratulations. I think we love seeing people develop professionally, that's what it's all about. Um, so we support you. Congratulations, gentlemen. Keep up the good work. And lastly, and we'll, this will require a motion to accept, we have an acknowledgement of an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of thirty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation of thirty dollars to Primetime.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Are there any, uh, minutes to approve tonight, boss? No minutes, okay. Now, we're gonna move on to approval of the warrants, Selectman, did you have that glass of water?
I'll take the, I got a, I got a jug here. But I'm gonna share this honor, so I'm gonna do June thirteenth and twentieth, and, and we will let our new colleague do the rest, okay? Mr. Chairman. Well, I'll go down to June twenty-seventh.
Perfect.
Okay, so pass, pass that one over, all right. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. June twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, warrant fifty A dash eighteen, in the amount of ninety-five thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents payroll. Warrant fifty B dash eighteen, in the amount of a hundred forty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars, fifty-two cents. Warrant fifty C dash eighteen, in the amount of three thousand, fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Warrant fifty D dash eighteen, in the amount of twenty-four hundred, fifty-five dollars, thirty-eight cents, the last three being accounts payable, be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the, uh, warrants dated June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, be approved as follows. Warrant fifty-one A dash eighteen, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars, forty-eight cents payroll. Warrant fifty-one B dash eighteen, in the amount of seventy thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars, thirty cents. Warrant fifty-one C dash eighteen, in the amount of forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. And warrant fifty-one D dash eighteen, in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and nine cents, the last three being accounts payable, be approved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants dated June twenty-seventh, this is three thousand and eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, be approved. Warrant fifty-two A dash eighteen, in the amount of a hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars, forty-six cents payroll. Warrant fifty-two B dash eighteen, in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and ten cents, I believe that's also payroll. Warrant fifty-two C dash eighteen, in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred seven dollars, fifteen cents. Warrant fifty-two D, in the amount of, um, two, hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred sixty-four dollars, forty-four cents. And warrant fifty-two E dash eighteen, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, eight dollars and eighty-nine cents, the last three being accounts payable, be approved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
I'll make a motion that the warrants from June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, warrant number fifty-three A, in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Warrant number fifty-three B, uh, three hundred and seven thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Warrant number fifty-four A, in the amount of twelve thousand.
Wait, wait a minute, excuse me.
It's not on here.
No, no, we got, what's the date of that one you got there?
June thirtieth.
These are all June thirtieth.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
They changed the warrant numbers, is that what?
And then it became fifty-four, yeah.
Fifty-four A, in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, ninety-seven cents. Fifty-four B, in the amount of one hundred, in fifty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-two cents. And warrant number fifty-four C, nine thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
I'll make a motion that warrants from July fourth, twenty eighteen, warrant number one B dash nineteen, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-four cents, and warrant number one C nineteen, three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
We have all those, too.
That's July eleventh.
Oh, my God, this is July fourth.
First time doing it.
I'm sorry.
But wait a minute.
This is like a rite of passage.
No, but he's right, something's missing, where is warrant one A dash nineteen?
I don't remember signing that one, for some reason, I don't remember seeing that in there, yeah, it wasn't, it like didn't exist. Yeah, me too, I remember that, that's a good point, but yeah, it, it wasn't there.
But all I'm saying is, are we sure that, because they follow in alphabetic, numerical and alphabetical order. So, I'm just wondering if they're numbered correctly, that's all, but anyhow, um, I second the motion.
All right, we have.
Oh, so, has he got more there to read?
That's for July eleventh, I misread it. Uh, we have a motion, yeah, he did it wrong, I made a mistake, and I apologize.
I did it before.
I did it right, I thought, I did it right.
We have a motion.
We're like a bunch of crazies right now.
It's ten o'clock on a summer night, we have a motion and a second, uh, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes.
I'll make a motion, uh, for warrants from July eleventh, uh, warrant number two A dash, it's a dash nineteen, ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Two B dash nineteen, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And two C dash nineteen, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Uh, we don't have any more public input, uh, so we're gonna, where?
Karen, could I have that sticky, please, just so I'll pass it back?
Public left, so we're gonna skip public input. Um, so, as chairman, uh, I'm, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A, uh, Exceptions Three and Ten. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, and if, if an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do. And ten, to discuss trade secrets or confidential or proprietary information regarding activities by a governmental body as energy supplier, municipal aggregator, or energy cooperative, if an open session will adversely affect conducting business relative to other entities making, selling, or distributing energy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes, roll call.
Aye.
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 And just so the public is aware, open session will not reconvene. Thank you so much, Cable, thank you, everybody, have a great night. Before we.
Every time he says, I want, I want him to say, "Good night, and good luck," so badly.
Thank you, Cable, have a good weekend.
I want it to be, like, a sticker, or like a decal, or something that we could put in here. Well, that was my thought, that the Agricultural Commission could generate funds in some way. Turn this off, how come your microphone is so smaller, your little thing? Oh, did we do that, or did they do that? So, we know that it's off, I didn't touch it, I knew it, Karen, so they must've done it.
They must've done it.
Okay, so.